All right, it looks like Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hinkle here for the BZA. We have a full lineup of participants. We have eight members of the public who are in attendance currently. Just if I could do the quick prep before you call your meeting to order, but I'd like to remind everybody, I'd like to ask all the participants to please mute yourself right now, and I'd like to call attention to those in attendance in the public to use the Q and A as your area for questions, or if you'd like to be recognized from the board. With that, Mr. Hinkle, I'll go ahead and let you, Mr. Chairman, the floor is all yours to begin.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm still not muted. Good. It's gonna take me a minute, sorry.
No problem, no problem. Everybody's got patience tonight.
I'm gonna call to order the Board of Zoning Appeals for the Village of Boston Heights, November 2020. And Mr. Mayor, would you call the roll, please?
Right, the time that was called to order is 7:02.
November 4th.
On November 4th, 2020. So, calling the roll Ted Chandler, Ron Dick.
Here.
Bill Hinkle.
Here.
Kathy May. Don Poliak.
Here.
Okay. All right, so...
And in the absence of, in the absence of Mr. Chandler at least, we'll ask Mr. Bush to join us as our designated alternate.
Okay. Michael Bush, are you here?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Now, Mrs. May was going to join us, wasn't she?
Yes, she was. Let me try calling her, maybe she's just...
We can, we can roll through some preliminaries while you're doing that. All right, in any case, we do have a quorum. And we are going to dispense with approval of the minutes this evening because we have not received any in our packets. And tonight, we have one agenda item, which is a variety pack of variance requests from Pure Development Incorporated as the applicant. And the property owner is Boston Hills Property Investment LLC.
Kathy.
This is, Bill, would you mute? Thanks. This is related to the...
Are you on the computer?
This is related to Heinz Hill property bounded by Dean Memorial Parkway, Old Eight, Heinz Hill, and the Ohio Turnpike. Now, as it happens, I have a conflict in this matter, and I'm going to have to recuse myself, which I've mentioned to the other members of the board earlier, under our rules of procedure, I have to step aside. So, on that note, I am asking for nominations for acting chair in my absence. And self-nominations are certainly welcome. Note that Mr. Poliak has acted in this stead in the past, but that is no...
Mr. Hinkle, I nominate Mr. Poliak as acting chair.
All right, that's Mr. Dick nominating. Any other nominations?
I nominate Don Poliak as well.
All right, I'll take that as a second. Any others?
Kathy May is on, do we see her?
Yep.
She's having a little problem with the...
Yes, I saw her log in.
Okay. Kathy, can you, are you muted?
You know, I think she's in as an attendee. There's two Kathys. I'm gonna bring one to promote the panelists.
Okay, how's that?
There you are. She's on.
Okay.
All right, great.
To bring you up to speed, Mrs. May, I am recusing myself, and we're in the midst of a exciting race to elect an acting chair.
They actually could hear everything, so you couldn't hear me.
Very good. Then, hearing no other nominations, I'll close the floor and ask for an overwhelming affirmative vote for our sole nominee. Aye.
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 Any objections? Hearing none, Mr. Poliak, I give you the gavel and I retreat. I believe you have an outline of the disposition of the meeting and so forth.
Yes, I do. I'm ready to, ready to go here. Thank you, everybody.
All right, can you take a moment to demote me?
I will do so.
Goodbye, sorry, I can't participate.
All right, Mr. Hinkle is now an attendee, he's in the public. All right, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna ask for a little bit of patience tonight on this. There's, this is well-attended. I'm gonna need to take my time with different documents as we proceed through tonight's agenda. And if everybody then can be very careful, I will make sure that we follow a good procedure. But I'm going to ask that everybody stay silent until I recognize you, and that'll help with the order of how things will happen tonight. On tonight's agenda, the only item on the agenda tonight is Pure Development Inc., Boston Hills Property Investment LLC, East Heinz Hill Road, parcels 1300724, parcel 1300605, parcel 1300941, and parcel 1300723. There are, Agenda Item A is a request for use variance, codified ordinance 1157 to permit use as a delivery station in OP District. Item B is a request for variance of codified ordinance 1157.07, intensity of use for specified building and site plan in OP District. And Item C is a request for variance of codified ordinance 1151.01, off-street parking spaces to allow additional spaces. The way that we're gonna proceed tonight is we're going to take each one of these one by one. I'm going to recognize, I believe, Mr. Sugarman, you're here as the representative of Pure Development. Can I, can I hear that you are here in attendance with us?
I am here, and I do in fact represent the applicant Pure Development Inc. Thank you.
All right, well, fantastic. We're going to, the process that we're gonna go down is, I'm going to go ahead and recognize you to give you the floor for your request. And we'll go ahead and allow that to happen. We'll allow, I gotta make sure, I gotta remember to swear in all of the, everybody who comes to the, who's going to be recognized tonight. And we'll also want to make sure that everybody in the public knows that if you have questions, to use the Q and A button, and we'll periodically go ahead and grab those when we can. So, Mr. Sugarman, could I please have you raise your right hand and swear that the testimony that you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Sugarman, could you please tell us what, what the request is?
Thank you, Mr. Poliak. We very much appreciate the opportunity to be in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals this evening. Before I get started on the actual remarks in the presentation, I wanted to acknowledge and thank Mr. Pitchford, the mayor, and the members of the OHM team for working with us to, to be able to provide this, this presentation, this exciting presentation to the Village of Boston Heights this evening. I have several people who are here this evening virtually, and I'd like to introduce them. Elizabeth Brier and Jody Sharp are from the applicant Pure Development Inc. Bill Lewis is also here, who is from Bowen, and they are engineers. And I also have Shannon Midgley and Kyle DeGiulio here, who are employees of the tenant, who is gonna be occupying this space. As you correctly indicated, we're here for three variances this evening. Acknowledge receipt of the staff report this afternoon, and we think that you did a great job outlining the variances themselves that we're looking for, the use, the intensity use, and the parking variances. We can go into those a little bit later, but in general, we will demonstrate this evening that the site that we plan to construct the building on, that I'll talk about in a minute, has special circumstances. And those special circumstances exist that support the granting of the variance. And literal enforcement of the code provisions will cause the applicant practical difficulties in, in developing this site. I would also note that the owner of the property, and I think you indicated that before, Sam Petros is here, and he will also give evidence and testimony as to the site, his efforts in the past of developing the site, and in particular, what this site is, is perfect for the type of development that we plan on, we plan on developing over there. I have submitted to the BZA several exhibits I'd like to identify, and I'm gonna identify them by letter, and if I could just go through them briefly.
I'm on a Zoom call, I gotta talk to you later.
As we go forward with the hearing this evening, we may refer to them by the exhibit letter. Exhibit A is the original, or the overall site plan that shows the 60-acre site where we intend to develop a 220,000-square-foot building.
Mr. Sugarman, I apologize for the interruption on that. As you do that, can you, do you have hard copies of those yourself as you're going?
I do, I do.
Would you just give me, do me a favor, like, and just show me exactly, like, saying, you know, hey, this is site plan? Okay, thank you.
Perfect, no problem. Can you see that okay?
I can, I, I see exactly which one, and I'm...
Got it.
This is Exhibit A, which is the overall site plan of the acreage and the proposed facility. Exhibit B is the striping and signage plan.
Just back that up a little bit. Got it, okay.
Exhibit C is the south elevation of the proposed building.
Okay.
Exhibit D is the north elevation of the proposed building.
Okay, thank you.
Exhibit E is the enlarged north elevation. It also has the typical building sign on the sheet.
Got it.
Exhibit F is the site signage.
Got it.
Exhibit G is the lighting plan.
Oh, boy. Hey, hold on. Got it.
And the last exhibit is Exhibit H, which is the, the site sections and the landscaping.
Got it.
Okay.
Can I ask all members of the board, do you have your copies? Does everybody have their copies in the corresponding exhibits?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Mr. Bush? Mr. Dick has them, Mr. May, I have them. Mr. Bush, you do not have copies. Okay. Let me take a moment here and get them over to you. Mr. Bush, I'm gonna email them over to you here.
Okay.
Mike, the mayor, I tried to, tried to call you a couple, Michael Bush, I tried to call you a couple times today to see if you were home or I could drop him off, but we didn't make connection. So I guess I should have just left it by your front door.
Yeah, yeah, I was in and out all day.
Yeah, all right.
Mr. Bush, do you have any issue giving me your email address right now, so I can just send them over to you, or do you want to private message me?
Oh, I don't care. It's F.M.A.K.84@AOL.com.
F.M.A.K.84.
Yeah. F and M, like Michael, A.K.84. And if I start getting any junk mail, it's all the people that are on this call.
All right. Let me know when you get it. One of the issues that I might be having is that in our smoking-fast internet at the village, I don't know if it will allow me to send the document. So I just attempted it. But boy, would it make life easier if we could, if we could get this over to you. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and understanding here in the world of Zoom meetings. I don't know if that's gonna go.
I haven't gotten anything yet.
Yeah, it's sitting in the op box, being cranky.
Maybe too large.
Mr. Bush, this is Marshall Pitchford. I believe you were copied on an email that was sent around 4 o'clock this afternoon that had all of the exhibits. You might maybe check your inbox or maybe your junk mail.
Who was it from?
I believe it was from Arthur Schmidt, the zoning inspector at OHM.
I do have an email from Arthur, but there were only three PDFs in there and no diagrams.
Michael, there's a link to download the files due to their file size.
Okay.
Mr. Bush, once you, once you have that, just give me a thumbs up. Just for everybody else, what we're gonna have tonight is testimony by Pure. We're going to have testimony from the landowner. We're going to have testimony from the zoning inspector. We're going to have an opportunity for public comments, and then we're gonna also then have the board discussion. That'll be the order of where, of how we'll proceed through these requests. Mr., how we looking?
Yeah, I'm getting to them right now.
Okay, great.
All right, I have them.
All right. Mr. Sugarman, would you please proceed? Thank you.
Thank you. And I know this is a little clunky, doing it by Zoom, and we appreciate everybody's patience. So here's what we're proposing. We're proposing a delivery station for an ultimate tenant that specializes in the transport of goods. The project will create several hundred full and part-time jobs in the Village of Boston Heights. All of the employees, associates that we're gonna have there are paid at least $15 an hour with a variety of benefit packages. At this time, depending on about 85% of those jobs being full-time. The station will also include what's known as delivery service partners, programs where independent contractors, entrepreneurs, if you will, will build their own businesses delivering packages for the tenant. I indicated before we proposed to build a 220,000-square-foot building, which will include office spaces. You've been provided, as I've indicated, with a site plan and various other plans, including the lighting and the landscaping, and we'll go over those this evening with. As you'll see from the surrounding area, the, the site is, is perfect for this type of a facility. It's bounded with access from the Ohio Turnpike. It has access to Route 8, corridor Heinz Hill Road, Old Eight, Dean Memorial Parkway, and as I indicated, the Ohio Turnpike. It's also in the vicinity of several new and exciting projects that have developed over time in the Village of Boston Heights, Costco, Our House, among others. It's also adjacent to the paycheck site and surrounds it. We'll talk a little bit about that in a little while. Ken intends to invest $40 million in this project in the Village of Boston Heights. We intend to start construction if we can obtain approvals from you this evening and from the Planning and Zoning Commission in the first quarter of 2020. As is noted in the staff report, the property is currently zoned Office Professional, which is the base zoning district, and also the Heinz Hill corridor overlay. There are sub-districts known as the Office Residential, Mixed Use General, and Village Center. Our proposed use is not permitted in those areas, hence we're asking the BZA to grant us the use variance, a delivery station in the district for the reasons I've outlined above. Submit that our intended use is harmonious with the surrounding area and is actually a perfect complement to the way that the area has been developed. As I mentioned before, Mr. Petros is here. We're gonna introduce him a little bit later in the presentation to talk about these issues, to explain, you know, what he has done in the past to try to market this property, and basically why the existing zoning is not suitable for, for that existing zoning. We are aware that the proposed use is gonna involve numerous vehicles, and we're keenly aware of the impact that it may have in the surrounding areas. And we've done everything possible to, to address and to minimize the impact to the Village of Boston Heights and the surrounding areas. I'd like now to introduce Elizabeth Brier from Pure Development, who will talk a little bit further about the site plan itself, some of the traffic issues, parking issues, and some of the other site plan factors that we've taken into consideration. Elizabeth?
Hi, thanks, or actually...
Before Elizabeth, before you, before you present, I have to ask you, are you willing to swear or affirm? Where are you? Here, let me find you on the...
Oh, me?
Yes.
I actually am not going to, I'm not, I'm actually not gonna present. Shannon is going to present on this portion instead. So Shannon, if you're there, I think he's gonna ask you that, that question.
Hi, thanks, Elizabeth.
Shannon, M.I.D.G.L.E.Y.?
Midgley.
Midgley.
Midgley, exactly. Thank you.
Midgley, all right, thank you. Ms. Midgley, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please proceed.
Absolutely. So Elizabeth, I think it'd be helpful for me to talk about, you know, the, the parking spaces that we're looking to have, is that correct? Or anything else that you'd like me to go into?
Yes, the parking spaces, as well as a little bit of just how the site flows in general on, on a day-to-day basis, from an operating perspective. Thank you.
Mrs. Midgley?
Midgley.
All right, I apologize. Could you also, for the record, identify your, your, your name, your address, your interest in this matter?
Yes, absolutely. So my name is Shannon Midgley, and I'm with the tenant. And my address is, I'm based out of Chicago, Illinois.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So first to touch on, you know, the ingress, egress of the traffic. So we'll have our delivery drivers coming in in their own personal vehicles. They'll park their own personal vehicles and then get into a delivery van. They'll disperse in waves, so the waves will not go out from about 10, it will go out around 10:00 a.m. to noon. So these are designed to offset, you know, the peak hours in the morning so that we're not disturbing traffic or adding more traffic on the roads during, you know, the busy times in Boston Heights. The delivery drivers will be en route for anywhere from about eight to 10 hours. So they'll be coming back later in the evening, you know, after the, the evening peak hours as well, also to mitigate those peak traffic hours in Boston Heights.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Midgley? All right, seeing none. Please, Mr. Sugarman, go ahead and keep proceeding with your...
Thank you. We also have Bill Lewis from, from Bowen here this evening, and we're gonna ask Bill to walk us through some of the site issues on, and I guess starting with Exhibit B, the number of spaces, the design of the building, and what we've done in terms of lighting, landscaping, and addressing some of the traffic issues there. Bill?
Bill, are you on?
Yep. Hi.
Could I get you to go ahead and swear or affirm? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you please identify your name, address, and interest in this matter?
Sure. My name is Bill Lewis. I'm with Richard Bowen and Associates. We are the architects for the project. We are out of Cleveland, Ohio.
Thank you.
So, so as Irvin indicated, we, we kind of laid out the site. It is a 220,000-plus-or-minus-square-foot delivery center. It's located, we located the, the entrance to the facility off of Heinz Hill, kind of lining up the, the main entrance to the facility with the, the existing traffic light center to Bass Pro Drive. The, the main traffic flow, I think, as, as was indicated by Shannon, there's two means of traffic. We've got the employee entrance there off of Bass Pro. The other drives you see on the site plan, those are for the vans coming in and out. They also have truck access off of Dean Memorial Parking. The facility will be screened with landscape buffers off of Old Eight, Dean Memorial. You will not be able to see the, the facility, and really, the parking as well, through... through landscape berms and plantings. Coming down Heinz Hill from the, what would be the west to the east, the grade drops about 80 feet as you're driving down Heinz Hill. So you will get some glimpses of the the main facade of the building, which will be the the office portion of the building as you travel down the hill. And I think we've provided some some sightline studies and some some landscape plans, as well as some images of we're going to have some retaining walls that that help mitigate the degrading issues on the site, which will be a fairly significant visual impact, the retaining walls there. So that that's will be what you see as you come down Heinz Hill. And then I guess I'm real here, if you have any questions at all on, you know, the building, the layout, the landscaping, the lighting, and the exhibits that we've provided, you know, let me know and and I can hopefully kind of walk you through them.
Mr. Lewis, are you mainly referring to this document? Can you see it?
Yep. So that would be our landscape plan.
Okay.
So there is also a site section study that has, you'll see a couple retaining wall kind of images in the lower right-hand corner. It also, it's got a smaller landscape plan that we use to kind of cut the site sections on it in the lower left-hand corner. That's the one right there, yeah. So that's kind of an overview of the site showing some some sightline studies, you know, where the building sits on the site, what you'll be able to see as from Old Eight, what you'll be able to see from Dean Memorial. And then we've got kind of a shot right at that Bass Pro intersection on the visibility of the the front elevation of the building.
Can you explain out what these these red line site walls are?
So the site walls, that's what you see there in the images on that plan. So it's a it's a ready rock retaining wall. So like I said, there is about 80 foot of grade change from the the west side of the site to the east side of the site. And the building itself, because it's a large, that really needs to sit on, we really have to flatten out, kind of plateau that entire area. So enable, in order to do that and maintain, you know, parking and access, we're going to have these walls in various locations, kind of terrace that create level parking fields around the building. So we chose a ledge stone look for these walls to kind of, you know, mimic, you know, what we've got going on with the the sign design is as well as, you know, kind of what you'd see in the, you know, the Cuyahoga National Valley Park there. It's that park look that we're going for. So that'll be the, you know, the most, I guess, visual element as you're driving down the roads. That's going to be closest to the road. And then you'll see the walls, you'll see the landscaping. And then the goal is that will kind of hide the parking in the building to to a degree.
So could you just further explain how it says on on this exhibit, the site section A, site section B? So I mean, maybe just so everybody's getting a chance to really see exactly, because it looks like there's little cars on here and that's that's what you're, and that this is where you're talking about, like, having these terraces. So these proposed walls are almost like it's it's terracing the land is what you're, what you're, what you're, what these are representing.
Correct, correct. So from, well, I guess if you if you look at the the topmost section through the site, left to right, it starts as if you were standing or driving on Old Eight. And directly off of Old Eight Road, if you kind of look at the plan and the section together, you can see that we've got a landscape bermed area about 100 feet. So that that berm and the natural topography, because Old Eight is on the the higher portion of the site, really from that vantage point, anywhere along Old Eight, you're not going to see really any part of the building. And you might see some glimpses of the the parking through the trees. But for the most part, that berm is going to hide the entire the entire site from Old Eight, the berm and the landscaping. So on the, conversely, on the right side of that uppermost section would be kind of standing or parking on Dean Memorial. And the sightlines that we show there, it's, you know, at the property line, five foot above grade, so as if you were standing there at the curb line. So conversely, that is the lowest portion of the site. So at that side, you'll see, you know, you kind of see where those red walls are. That's going to be that that ledge stone retaining wall. So those elements are going to help mitigate the the grade changes as well as provide a background to the landscaping, the berms. So the intent there is that as you're standing on the lower portion of the site, you're looking at the walls, at the foliage, and that's going to, you're going to, you're not going to be able to see over those to get a glimpse of the building or the parking. So the second section is there on Heinz Hill Road. And that's taken kind of directly across from at the main intersection. So at the at the entrance to the facility, the the customer entrance, the the public entrance. And so that you'll see, that is where you'll get that wall at that that kind of first red wall you run into. That's going to be about 20, 25 foot high. So it is a significant change. So you're going to, you're going to kind of see the wall. There'll be some landscaping in front of it. And then up on top of that, you'll get the terrace parking and then the building set back beyond that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I will ask if the board has any questions at this time for Mr. Lewis before we move on with Mr. Sugarman, Mr. Sugarman's presentation.
Not at this moment.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Sugarman?
Thanks again, Mr. Poyack. Point, we think it might be appropriate for Mr. Petros to, a little bit, I know that Mr. Pitchford and I have talked about how the presentation would go this evening. Well, I guess, you know, before we asked Mr. Petros, I'd ask Mr. Pitchford if he'd like to make any statements or maybe the folks from OHM. I'm not sure when that could be appropriate.
We were going to, I was going to call on them after. I was going to provide you the floor to be able to go through your requests and reasonings around the the request and then give the landowner, Mr. Petros, an opportunity. And then I would move on to OHM and the zoning inspector.
Great. Well, I think it's a it's a good time then to to ask Mr. Petros to address the board.
All right, Mr. Petros, will you be sworn?
I swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Sam Petros, 10474 Broadview Road, Broadview Heights, Ohio.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Petros. Floor is yours.
So over the, over the years that I've accumulated this property and the many years I've worked in Boston Heights, we've tried several different ideas here on this property to develop it because, as you know, carrying empty property doesn't do us any good, or you, actually. And we've not been able to generate an idea that's financially feasible and acceptable and palatable to the village. And I think if many of you know me, I've worked with you for many, many years and always trying to do what we can all agree upon and make sense of. And through that period of time, we've marketed this property and we have yet to attract any attention from anyone other than distribution centers. And the reason's obvious. The state of Ohio spent, I think, 140 million building an interchange and that interchange change provides great access to the Turnpike into I- to 271 and Route Eight. And the property is just screaming for that purpose. And everyone that has come to us with any uses that they wanted to use have been distribution. So this is the natural use for the property. It's fairly obvious here we are with it. Thank you.
Any members of the board have any questions right now for the property owner? Hey, Sam, what happened before, I believe, one of the questions here from the public, what happened to the proposed housing and condos? Would you go ahead and answer that?
I just couldn't make it work financially. The land values are high, the land costs were high. The the demand is there for it, but it was really just the cost. The costs were too high and it just didn't work, or I would have done it immediately. And believe me, I've spent at least a quarter of a million dollars working through different scenarios on this land. And none of them have been able to work for me yet. And, you know, actually, I'm excited and blessed to be part of bringing this to Boston Heights and to the county and to the state because this is what it really was meant to be.
I'll recognize any questions right now for Mr. Petros.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Petros.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Sam, when the, you brought to the committees the concept of the subdivision, there was a lot of discussions around the landscaping on Old Eight to hide as much as possible the homes that were going to be built and have them not visible from the other side of Old Eight for the residents. How how is the landscaping going to be for this project? As now it's a much longer footprint on that property. And the question was, you know, how tall this building is and what would the residents on the other side of Old Eight see? Especially when, just especially because now there's a parking lot there and you're going to have lighting from the parking lot that's going to be, you know, there seven by 24.
So in my plan that I had, it called for an entrance and exit road on Route Eight in front of their homes. And this, of course, doesn't. The building itself is very, very far from Route Eight, old Route Eight, I'm sorry, very far from the residences where my plan had them right up there next to the residences. So the lighting, and I looked through the plans this afternoon, has zero dispersion onto the neighborhood. It's all direct down into the parking lot. I don't believe they're going to see very much of anything, maybe a flow. I don't know how tall the landscape mound is that's proposed, but it's very, very good and very efficient. So I would say that the odds are that they're probably not going to see anything relative to what they were going to see on my subdivision. And again, I want to point out that the building is far down the site and in much lower an elevation.
Do we, was a traffic plan or a traffic study done prior to this meeting, Mr. Chairman?
There was, if I could interject, there was a traffic impact study and that has been provided to the village and to OHM advisors. And in, we'll address that a little more in the PZC hearing. I think, and I think that OHM's comments were directed in their staff report for the Planning and Zoning Commission that'll take place right now. If I could add and just supplement what Petros indicated, the lighting plan, there was no spillage at the at the boundaries of the site. So there is no zero foot candles at the edge of any of the site. In terms of the landscaping, we have provided you with some information about what we've done. We have met or believe we've met or exceeded the landscaping for Our House which is similarly situated. And we have also had some discussions with OHM. If there is additional landscaping that's necessary, we will work with them to ensure that it meets the building specifications. Bill Lewis, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Mr. Lewis, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm just unmuting myself. No, other than, I think it was touched upon, you know, really from Old Eight, the topography of the site works in in our favor. The building sits about 30 foot, finished floor of the building will be about 30 foot below the 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 finished grade of the roadway there, Route Eight. So with, I think we're proposing a five to seven foot berm with, you know, seven foot trees planted that'll grow, you know, three, four times that height over the years. So really, yeah, that is one place where you really won't be able to see really anything of, you know, not much of anything on the site, you know, parking, building at all, so.
Will will treat, one of the questions here from the public is, would trees be cut down on Old Eight?
So right now, yes, the the, I believe the plan that's there right now has, we're clearing up to about 100 foot of Old Eight. And the thought is that 100 foot then will be kind of a newly created landscape berm as opposed to the the current natural foliage that's there right now. So that's the current plan, how it stands.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and keep this moving along. Let's remember that the request for this variance that the BZA is hearing right now is a permit to use as a delivery station in the OP District or the Heinz Hill Overlay. And the request for the variance is also to, for the intensity of use for the specified building and site plan in the OP District. Any other members of the BZA have any questions right now as we're going to continue to proceed to Mr. Petros? All right, seeing none. Arthur, I'm going to ask, are you here to address the issue tonight?
Yes.
Can can I swear you in and then you can identify? All right. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right. The floor is yours after you identify yourself and your interest in the matter.
All right, thank you. Arthur Schmidt, OHM Advisors, project manager, as well as village zoning inspector for the village of Boston Heights. So good evening, everybody. For the BZA members, we sent later this, earlier this afternoon, later this afternoon. Time is irrelevant, I feel like, right now. At some point this afternoon, our staff report, and in it, as was indicated by Mr. Sugarman, outlined in the requested variances, which are the use variance for the proposed delivery station, an office professional, the intensity of use for the specified building and site plan within office professional, and then the variance for off-street parking spaces. So within my report, it just outlines some of the facts that Mr. Sugarman has already outlined with respect to the request for those variances. The area I'm going to draw your attention to is in, is on page three of my report, section C, which is additional comments. And that area speaks to codified ordinance, chapter 114506, which actually lists out the variant standards for the Board of Zoning Appeals. So in order to grant a variance, I'll make sure I have all my things up there. In order for the board to grant a variance, it lists the items that the board needs to, needs to find in the case that's being made by the applicant. So that's the chapter I'm referencing. And so within that section, I just highlight my comments as it relates to that. And so within that section, I just highlight my comments as it relates to that. As indicated by Mr. Petros, the owner of the property has been attempting to develop slash sell the land for the intended permitted and conditional uses. Both that are listed under the underlying zoning, which is office professional, as well as the Heinz Hill Overlay District. The use type has been the one that is most soughted by the interested parties and is also present in other situations within the Heinz Hill Overlay District. So that was what Mr. Petros was indicating in his testimony. And again, we have found a very similar use within this Heinz Hill Overlay District just across the street to this site with the our house building. My second point to bring up is that the proposed use of this land would not be different than what the landlords could do in other zoning districts within the village. So that's one of the requirements, again, within the office professional district, maybe not to this scale, hence why we're here for the intensity of use variance. But this is something that's similar within the office professional, within the Heinz Hill corridor overlay district that other landowners could potentially develop as. The third point I want to bring up is that in in granting this variance to the applicant, it would keep things in harmony which with what is generally offered in other zoning districts. And more importantly, I want to raise what exists within the general area of the proposed development. Again, I want to reference the the our house development just across the street as as a case study to that. The fourth point to bring up is that, again, due to the nature of the proposed use and development, as indicated by Mr. Sugarman and the rest of the team in their testimony, the applicant could not practically develop the property under the standards listed within the codified ordinance under the office professional and Heinz Hill Overlay District, hence why the applicants are here this evening requesting the variances before you. So again, and the nature of this development is also consistent with those similar developments located within the municipality, within the village, again, just across the street. So as the applicant has shown, the proposed parking spaces and configuration, they're deeming it necessary as part of their operations and proposed development. Again, just reiterating that the proposed development is similar in use and size to a certain degree with an existing development within the vicinity of the parcel, again, referring to our house, and that this parcel, this development is is still under the guidance and still can be under the guidance as it relates to site landscaping and architectural guidelines as outlined within the Heinz Hill Overlay District. And I think some of the testimony that we're starting to talk about now and that we will get into a little bit more further in the Planning Commission hearing, you are starting to hear those elements coming forward in context with the development that is being proposed this evening. The the one part that I want to bring a colleague of mine, Mr. Poliak, to the table is in regards to the request for the variance for the parking. Our staff at OHM and our team were reviewing the the traffic study report. And we did, since you were bringing up if we had questions to the design team, since that was brought up at this time, I would like to have the chairman recognize my colleague, John Grimm, as we did have a question as it relates to our initial review of the traffic study report. So, Mr. Poliak, if we can recognize John Grimm and swear him in to ask his question, he is the individual who reviewed the traffic study. So I would like him to specifically ask the question as he reviewed the material, not myself, so that way it is being asked in an accurate fashion.
Mr. Grimm, are you on tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right. Please identify yourself and your interest in the matter.
I'm John Grimm. I work for OHM Advisors as the traffic engineer.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Really, the biggest thing that I noticed during the cursory review of the impact study was just the discrepancy between the number of proposed parking spaces and the amount of proposed trips generated by the development. I just wanted to, I guess I would have assumed that they were going to be a little bit close to one another, but just wanted to at least ask the question as to, you know, what the not necessarily reason for the big discrepancy, but just, I guess, more clarification.
Mr. Sugarman, who would who was best on your team be able to field that question?
Shannon, are you still here?
I am still here and I am able, I think, to actually get my video working, so apologies for that before.
Perfect.
Certainly. So for a number of spaces here, we'd probably expect to have about two hundred and ninety employees and about three hundred and forty drivers. So like I had mentioned before, the drivers would come in in their personal vehicles, park them, and then move on over to pick up a delivery van. So, you know, that's the easiest clarification for a number of parking spaces that we're requesting.
Mr. Grimm, do you have any follow-up on that?
Oh, no, that'll be it for now. Thank you.
So again, the number of employees that you were just mentioning there was two hundred and ninety, and then how many delivery?
We'd expect about three hundred and forty.
Three hundred and forty. And that's the reasoning behind the parking?
Yes, absolutely.
And again, just for myself, Mike, one of my questions since you're you're here and you you mentioned before that the main traffic times are going to be from ten to noon and from six to eight, but that's mainly from for the deliveries. Can you can you describe the the time that the employees will be coming in, the times that it'll be mainly in use for the the rest of the traffic for the?
Yes, absolutely. So we'll have our biggest shift will be the overnight hours. So we'll have the the line haul trucks coming in the overnight hours, typically between ten PM and eight AM. And so then they will will have associates there who will be unloading the vans and putting all the packages onto movable racks. The delivery drivers will be arriving more around nine, nine fifteen in the morning, and then their vans will get loaded up and they'll depart around, you know, probably about ten o'clock AM.
You said the overnight shift is the would be the majority of the employees would be during that time?
Exactly.
Thank you. Arthur, I'm going to bring it back, or does that complete your report?
The only other things I would I would add to it are related to, again, just reiterating the precedent that was set within the village as as relates to this development, again, looking across the street with our house. I know we're talking about a different a different kind of intensity, obviously a little bit greater than what our house was proposing. And again, indicating that the design standards, landscaping site and architectural was established within the Heinz Hill Overlay District can still be applicable through Planning Commission. And again, as Mr. Sugarman and their design team have been indicating thus far with their testimony to date, that they are looking to abide by that, especially as it relates to the landscaping requirements and going above and beyond even some of our requirements to ensure that the the site development and probably more specifically, the parking areas are properly screened. And as Mr. Lewis indicated in his testimony, that site site area plan study that they provided this evening begins to show how that is to be viewed. I know it's a large site, so it looks rather rather large, but it's verifying that the parking area is not going to be seen due to the landscape screening that is going to be provided for that with that. With that, I just have one more question, Mr. Poliak, to to Shannon, related to the trips. Is is could you explain maybe a little bit more the difference between trips and parking? Or is that just like your standard numbers that you that you go by? And I apologize in advance, we're still, as John indicated, kind of doing our cursory review, so that's why some of these questions.
No problem. And sorry, my Wi-Fi is cutting in and out. Do you mind repeating your question?
No, 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 let's go. I just wanted a bit more explanation on the difference between the trips and the parking for the use of your site as as you were indicating, right? So you have the parking component for the office employees and then the driver's vehicles and then the use of your vehicles and how many of those vehicles are being parked on site, you know, just?
Absolutely. I'm going to try to pull up our actual traffic generation report. I don't know, Jody or Elizabeth, if you guys have that open. If not, I will definitely pull that open and can walk through those numbers.
I do not have that open.
I I don't have it open. Oh, I mean, I have the operational narrative, I think, somewhere, is that? But I don't have it.
Yeah, certainly. So I can I can work on pulling that up, but I think too, we're looking at the, you know, the number of spaces there. And I think what what might be also helpful to talk about for the additional spaces is that comparing it to, you know, like a shopping mall parking lot. So if you look at that in, you know, June or July, it wouldn't be super busy. But then in, you know, the the peak holiday season around end of October through December, it would be busier. So running for a little bit of buffer room there as we might need additional capacity during that time.
Because that's what we were, because we're in looking at the numbers, you know, was it about two twenty-four plus another three forty-one? That's roughly, you know, close to six hundred spots and just trying to see that difference between that and the fifteen ninety being proposed in the parking plan at least.
Certainly.
Yeah.
And so some of that, too, is for, you know, two parking spaces, one for the associates to come in and their or the delivery drivers to come in in their personal vehicles, park there and then load into a delivery van as well. So that's where some of those additional spaces come from as well.
Are you expecting one more follow-up? Are you expecting, as you were talking about comparison to shopping malls, you know, during the holidays and having the capacity there, are you expecting an increase of of vans or having an increase of vans during that that holiday period?
Yes, it's certainly possible, depending on, you know, the demand from Boston Heights. If there's more packages requested, then we will, you know, try and meet that demand. So we will expect a slightly heightened amount during that time, certainly.
Mr. Poliak, if I may ask a question?
Please, go ahead, Mr. Dick.
Shannon, for the overnight hours, say from four AM to like seven AM, what will the intensity of traffic be on Dean Memorial and West or East Heinz Hill Road during those hours? And and what mix would that traffic be?
Would I represent it from bow and have a better answer for the for that question?
See, maybe I can clarify.
On the specific roads?
Yeah, so Dean Memorial is where your your line haulers will be coming in overnight. So I I think so Dean Memorial.
We'd expect to have about thirty trucks, probably thirty line haulers coming in for this location.
And then and then Heinz Hill would be the access for those overnight and employees.
Okay, the only reason I, yeah, the only reason I ask is for morning traffic, for morning commuting, for those of us that do have to get up early and actually make it out of the area.
Certainly, yeah. So our first shift, that's those morning hours will be about a hundred and fifty associates, and they'll be coming in, you know, probably between midnight and two AM.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Shannon or Bill, whichever, you had mentioned that on the overnight hours, you're going to have roughly, or on average, thirty line haulers. One of the things that we've seen with our house is that at times they've had their tractor-trailers lined up along Heinz Hill, waiting to get into the complex for various different reasons, waiting for a bay to open up or for other traffic coming in and out. How is your facility set up to handle ten or twelve of these long haulers at one time? What would be the condition that you would have your long haulers parked out on Heinz Hill, trying to get gain access into your facility?
Yeah, so certainly these trucks.
Shannon, can you check your connection?
You froze.
Mr. Chair, if Shannon, if you could hear us, it might be worthwhile actually to turn your video off. It might help with your broadband connection, so that way we can at least hear.
So Shannon, you?
If Shannon's still disconnected, this is Kyle. I work with Shannon, so you haven't sworn me in, but I'm happy to do that and answer any questions if Shannon has lost internet connection.
Yeah, Kyle, why don't we go ahead and swear you in and then you can pinch-hit right now. Give me your full name.
Full name is Kyle DeGiulio, representing the tenant. I am based in Chicago, Illinois.
Okay. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, Kyle, please go ahead while Shannon's still trying to regain her connection. Thank you.
For sure. And it's a very fair question about trucks and not having them back up. I think, given that the the trucks are arriving based on demand that we will have, we're actually able to sequence them in a way where we know when they're arriving and we know when they'll be exiting. So can't promise that a hundred percent of the time that there might not be that one truck that arrives fifteen minutes early and there's a minor backup. But generally speaking, we only have enough dock doors to accommodate the trucks that we bring in. They unload very quickly because the items are already boxed and they are brought directly into the facility. And as soon as they are unloaded, that truck turns around and exits the site.
Kyle, they're all it it which road those are coming in and out of? And maybe, Mr. Lewis, you can you can describe that with the site map. How would these long haul, how will these haulers be coming in and getting out?
They all come in and out off of kind of the southern southern access point on Dean more Dean Memorial Parkway.
So at about that place where it looks like right by Bevin and Associates turn in for for the board by the old Norwood Inn, the Norwood Inn Southern entrance entrance?
Yes, yes, the southern entrance there.
Is there any reasons why these haulers would be coming in and out of any of the other areas?
No, they don't have access to the it they don't have access at all to the other parking areas. The.
They would not, they would not be on Old Eight or on Heinz Hill Road, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, the the entrances aren't designed for them, the sweeps aren't designed for them. We've got, you know, two of those access points are exit-only. So really, the only point the line haulers will have the ability to even have the ability to is off of Dean Memorial there.
And just for just for clarity, I used a reference of Heinz Hill with this old with our house, not not saying that they would come in that way, but I gave that as an example that our house has, what, fifty, seventy-five bays? And they still back up long haulers on Heinz Hill. So when you have a limited number, as being described here, and they're coming on Dean Memorial, we're putting a lot of traffic on Dean Memorial, and to have tractor long haulers just sit there trying to get in or trying to get out or possibly parking on the side of the road is just going to create havoc.
Definitely, just just to make sure. So Brian, how many dock doors? I'm looking at the site plan, but the small, how many dock doors do you have here?
We've got seventeen shown.
Great. So at at no given time, based on the volume that we have, would we have more than seventeen haulers there at the same point from ten PM until basically seven AM in the morning?
Do we get that in writing?
I can't I can't promise you that there won't be the the odd occasion where there is, you know, one stray van, but we're doing these all over the country and that issue with traffic, it has not been impacted elsewhere.
It it does your traffic increase during holiday seasons, shopping seasons for deliveries? And also, yeah?
Yes, yes, it does.
Mr. Bush, do you have any more questions around that item?
No, I think I've brought it up already.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're, I appreciate that.
I do have one more question.
Go ahead, Mr. Dick.
Will the additional traffic require additional traffic signals in the area?
Mr. Lewis, you want to try, you want to try at that one?
I don't believe, based on the traffic study, that they are required. I think that.
This is, I think.
Jody, I can answer that.
Okay, Jody.
Wait, wait, Jody, you're, you're coming in?
Yes, sir.
All right, Jody, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Could you please identify your full name, address, and interest in the matter?
Yeah, Jody Sharp with Pure Development, developer on the project, working with the tenant.
Thank you.
Located Indianapolis, Indiana.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the, the traffic impact study, as the question was alluding to, based on the use of this project, the, the, the traffic it generates alongside of the existing traffic that was counted on the adjoining roadways. The, the only signal enhancement that was recommended is at the Bass Road Drive. And it would be a changing from a three-way signaled intersection to a four-way signaled intersection to allow associates into the parking area. You know, the improvements around that would obviously be adding another direction, that fourth direction to that signal, as well as a left turn lane, if you're coming from the east on Heinz Hill Road to turn into the site. But that's the only signal improvement recommendation in the traffic impact study.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Arthur, did you, were you, did you conclude your questions then, or did you have any other items?
I did not, Mr. Chair, I did not have any other items to indicate beyond what I have and within my report, unless my colleagues, John Grimm or Brian Gorag, the village engineer, have any questions to, to the developer or if any BZA members have questions specifically for myself or, or my colleagues at this time.
Okay. Hi, Brian. Okay, we're going to go ahead and then move to, I'd like to be able to offer an opportunity for questions, comments from supporters or people who are protesting it. At this time, I am open to fielding questions from the public. I'm going to go into the Q and A in order to, to do this. What I would ask is members of the public, if, if you would, some of the comments or questions, if they could be rephrased to specific people, that'd be helpful so that we can expedite the question to the right, to the right folks. So there are some questions from some neighbors and residents. If you could, if you could go back in and rephrase your question specifically to who, who, who you're asking those things to, that'd be helpful right now. There are a couple of questions here. Is this project like an Amazon delivery? Is one of the questions from one of the village residents and neighbors. I mean, this, it's a huge delivery center. Let's see, what's the name of the company? I don't think that that has been provided or been given out as of, as, as of right now. The, who is the tenant is another question. And again, the request is by Pure Development, Inc., Boston Property Investments. And then another question here was, I thought the overlay was created to protect this area of the resident. You all pushed this. A bit of a comment. I'll go ahead and insert this in here. So anybody else from the public who would like to ask a question, I'm just going to ask you to go into the Q and A and direct it. But I'll go ahead and assume that we've basically answered everything that's been put up so far. All right. And I'll keep continuing to watch and field those questions. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the board right now to go ahead and discuss and ask your questions or provide a, start to develop a motion.
Mr. Poliak?
Yes.
Mayor Gansy, I received a call this afternoon from Travis Bonnet, representing the Ohio Turnpike Commission. Add just a few questions on how the traffic would be and where it was going to be. Is very interested in the project and encourages whoever the tenant may be to utilize the turnpike itself. But the Turnpike Commission is in favor of the, of the project.
That's a good thing. Mr. Mayor, do you, would you also be able to speak on, on behalf of the, the village and the administration and the fact that council provided a vote in, in regards to this manner as well?
Yes, I could. We have looked at this and as we know, this land is, it's vacant and been zoned since the 60s and 70s. Office professional on that. Talked with the council, the, because of the fact that the person or the company involved here does not wish to be disclosed at this time. Talked with the council and told them pretty much what we've been going over this evening. And they were interested in the value this, this will give to those of Boston Heights. And as a result, the council generated a resolution that was unanimously passed by all six council members in support of this project. And I myself have supported it. Thank you.
I'd like to read into the record as well that there's some, there is a, a, a letter from a resident. James Hurchek, who I believe is one of the neighbors on Old Eight. "To all members of the BZA, the request of Pure Development, Inc. variants should be denied. This property is zoned with an overlay and that is the way it should stay. Thank you, James and Lise Hurchek, 7194 Old Eight Road." Make sure that is also in the record for your consideration on the board. All right. Board members of the BZA, please go ahead and ask your questions or provide your comments and dialogue. All right. Oh, here, there's more questions. Mr. Grimm of OHM, there is a question from Mr. Barco, resident, Village Boston Heights. Is this the same traffic study of the one for our house?
Separate study, to my understanding anyway.
Separate study. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I can also, I can also add to that. So, so, so the traffic study that was done for our house was specifically, while I wasn't at the village at the time, but that's, traffic study is done specifically for the development of our house and the traffic impact related to our house coming into the village. So this traffic study that was completed was a traffic study to look at the traffic impacts related to this development coming on, on this piece of property and the surrounding roadways and the impact on that. So that's, it's, it's specific to the development that it's being conducted for.
Thank you. All right, I'll read in another comment from a neighbor. That is a lot of traffic for this area to handle for this area. We trusted that this overlay to protect us. And I don't know if also, if anybody, Mr. Shugman on your team, that would like to even talk to those residents right now with their concern around the traffic and/or even some of the alter, alternatives that that the, if the Heinz Hill overlay or if it was developed OP, what that would look like from a different standpoint?
I, I don't know that we're able to address traffic impact for the current zoning district, but I, that we have spent a considerable amount of time looking at the traffic in the area as a result of this development, as Mr. Schmidt has indicated to us. And we have spent a lot of time working on that issue to make sure that the traffic impact is as negligible as possible, given the size of this particular, this particular project.
All right, well, thank you. All right, members of the.
Mr. Poliak.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I'd also like to comment that as part of this traffic study, car counting was done at the intersections along Old Eight. Those of you who lived in the area probably noticed, are sitting in different areas, taking this count into effect. So yes, that was all considered. And any changes that would be there were triggered by that traffic study group. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I also add a comment to that?
Please, go ahead.
The other, the other point, any type of development done for this property was going to have a traffic impact to the village, different from what is going on currently, with the site, you know, not being in use right now. Anything that would have been done to this site was going to have, you know, an, an impact on the traffic and, and more than likely have increased it, regardless of the type of development that there is. But again, the traffic study was conducted to understand that impact on, on the traffic around the development and to ensure that, you know, anything that needs to, anything that needs to occur to make sure that it has, you know, a negligible impact can be done. So as that study is further investigated, that will all be confirmed.
If I remember correctly, too, we, we've looked at these things in the past and, and looked at, you know, even looked at a moderate density of apartments and townhomes and homes. And I, I remember those being in the, in the hundreds where you would have hundreds of cars coming in and out, potentially on Heinz Hill and Old Eight, you know, with, with, with some of those alternate options that were proposed in the past. So it looks like to me with 290 employees or, you know, that are coming into the warehouse in different shifts and the fact that there's 340 delivery drivers that are mainly, you know, seasonal, some heavier, some, some lighter, but coming in during those, those non-peak, 10 and, 10 to noon and coming back six to eight hours. It, it, it seems, seems reasonable for this type of high-impact, really good use of being able to put people to work on, on that property. Any other members of the board have any comments? I'd like to make sure that we, again, the mayor and the administration have, have recommended this. Council has come with a unanimous vote in support. It looks like our village zoning inspector and engineering partner within the review are also in their full support. The floor is open for the BZA. If not, I can offer a suggested motion.
Mr. Poliak?
Go ahead, Mr. Dick.
I, I move that, or make a motion that we grant the exception with the practical difficulty being usage or the intended usage with not being able to actually utilize the property so long because of zoning effectively prevented that usage.
Second?
Mrs. May? All right, so I have a motion from Mr. Dick, seconded by, by Mrs. May.
Mr. Poliak, if I may, can we clarify, can we clarify the, the motion with respect to which one of the three variances? Or is it indicating approval of all three of the requested variances? And I, my understanding is that it's for the adoption of a resolution to that effect.
So, Mr. Dick, would you please either amend your, your motion? Or I, I also have a, I could offer a, some suggested pieces of, within a motion that you can do.
If you would like to offer some suggested verbiage, since that's where I tend to fall short, that would be appreciated.
All right. Let's see. Request for variance. The requirements of Cut, Afford Ordinance is 1157, restricting the use within office professional district are hereby relieved to the extent that the property may be used as a delivery station for transitional warehousing and distribution goods via delivery vehicles commonly based at and parked upon the property with such relief subject to and conditioned upon the following requirements and restrictions. Here's some offered suggestions here. Such a variance is granted subject to conformance by the applicant with all presentations and exhibits offered by the applicant at this hearing and subject to all other applicable laws, codes, regulations, and inspections, as well as the usual approval of site plan by planning commission. Such a grant of variance shall not run with the land but shall continue for the life of the facility first erected in conformance with these requirements and shall extend to current and all successor owners of the parcel and/or the facility and for all legal and approved uses thereof, but shall terminate and shall be revoked upon the demolition, destruction, or other substantial removal of said facility or change in the use of such facility, except as otherwise approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals upon application and review. And furthermore, if the erection of such facilities is not initiated through procuring of permits and beginning of construction within one year of approval of the site plan, of the final site plan by the planning commission, or if no such approval is granted by the planning commission within one year of the grant of this variance, then this grant of variance is revoked.
Mr. Poliak, may I ask, may I add one more? One more condition for the, or one more element to the revocation question and being that the user fails to abide by all zoning rules, regulations, permits, and approvals, including when not limited to the final site plan approval.
Can't write that fast, Mr. Pitchford, but would you be able to put that in writing for me?
Yes, I'm happy to email that to you.
Okay, thank you.
I can read it.
It eloquently expresses what I was trying to say.
Mr. Dick?
So I, I would agree with your expression of my motion.
Okay, who else was trying to speak there at that, at that moment?
It was me again, Mr. Pitchford. The, the last issue was whether or not, and maybe I just didn't hear it, whether or not the motion to adopt the resolution was to cover all three requests? Or was it just, we're going to do one at a time? My suggestion is that we do all three, if that's the will of the board.
Well, this is, I don't believe we can, because the first one is a use variance and the second one is an area size variance. and the second one is an area size variance.
I was I was speaking to the use variance. That was my motion.
Yes.
Okay, all right, Mr. Dick, then. With what we read in the record, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Okay, in addition to what was offered as a recommendation from the solicitor?
Agreed.
Mrs. May, was that? Is that your second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is that acceptable? There is a question here on the motion on the floor. Mr. Pitchford? It's a procedural question. Mr. Pitchford, I'm going to ask, there's a procedural question on, is it am I in some way prohibited from voting on this issue? In the fact that I've already voted in favor of this as a council member?
No, your role on the Board of Zoning Appeals is a result of your designation by the council as its designate to the Board of to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, would you please call a roll? You're on mute. All right. Ron Dick?
Yes.
Kathy May?
Yes.
Don Poliak?
Yes.
Michael Bush?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. The request for variance for permitted use of the delivery station in the OP district has been granted. Second. If we could move to item B, the request for variance of codified ordinance 1157.01, intensity of use for specified building and site plan in OP district. I'd like to open the floor now to the members of the board for either discussion on the topic or a motion. And again, I have a have some suggested language that we can create as a starting point.
Please go ahead.
All right, Mrs. May. At your request here, the requirements of codified ordinance 1157.07 variously restricting the intensity of use within office professional district are hereby relieved on this property to the extent required to permit erection of the building and other facilities substantially as depicted in the site plan and other present presentations and exhibits offered by the applicant at this hearing with such relief subject to and conditioned upon the following requirements and restrictions. Such variance is granted subject to oh, boy. We have the consummate in issuance of a corresponding use variance by the board permitting the use of said facility as a delivering station. Such variance provides no relief from any additional requirements mandated by other sections, subchapters or chapters of the codified ordinances of the Village of Boston Heights. Such variance is granted subject to the requirement that all legal parcels comprising the property shall be merged into a single legal parcel before construction of the proposed building and other facilities. Such variance is granted subject to conformance by all applicant by the applicant with all presentations and exhibits offered by the applicant at this hearing and subject to all their applicable laws, codes, regulations and inspections, as well as the usual approval of site plan by the planning commission with such concurrence of the engineer as may be required by that commission or the codified ordinances of the Village of Boston Heights. Such grant of variance shall not run with the land but shall continue for the life of the facility first erected in conformance with these requirements and shall extend to the current and all successor owners of the parcel and or of the facility and for all legal and approved uses thereof, but shall terminate and shall be revoked upon the demolition, destruction or other substantial removal of said facility except as otherwise approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals upon application and review. And furthermore, if the erection of such facilities is not initiated through procurement of permits and beginning of construction within one year of approval of the site plan by the planning commission, or if no such approval is granted by the planning commission within one year of the grant of this variance, then this grant of variance is revoked.
Again, Mr. Poliak, if I might also suggest that the variance be revoked if the user fails to abide by all zoning rules, regulations, permits and approvals, including but not limited to the final site plan approval.
We will add that to the starting point of the motion. Members of the Board of the Zoning Appeals, there is some language that that could be used to move this along for either a granting or a denial for the request for intensity of use. Can a member of the board either give me a motion or provide further discussion?
Mr. Poliak, I would move to accept that language in this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Is there a second on the suggested motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. May. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing or hearing none, Mr. Mayor, would you please provide a roll call vote?
Yes, Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Dick?
Yes.
Mr. Poliak?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Motion passes. The request for variance of intensity of use for specified building and site plan has been granted. Item C on the agenda is a request for variance of codified ordinance 1151.07 off-street parking spaces to allow additional spaces within the proposed development. Is there any discussion at this point or would the board like to hear a starting language for emotion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment on this one. Earlier, Arthur and OHM were having conversations about these parking spaces. Also, within the the status document that they submitted, they also raised the issue of coming up with somewhat of a better number of actual spaces required. Going through the documents, there are several instances where numbers are being thrown around of 1,098, another one, 658. And there's a comment that these numbers may also have to be doubled to get to a factual number. So it seems to be a lot of questions around these parking spaces and the footprint that they're going to take. So just in line with what Arthur had said that there needs to be further details submitted to exactly what is going to be required as a total at any given time.
Mr. Chair, if I can make a comment to that?
Go ahead, Arthur. You're still under your-
Yes. Yes, Mr. Bush, to that to that effect, if within the recommendation, because there's still more time needed for our team to go through all the nuances of the traffic study. We had put in a provision that in in our support of the variance specific to off-street parking spaces, 1151.07, that a provision would be could be placed that a an approval will be based on and subject to final approval by the zoning inspector and OHM village staff for our final review. To to that effect, Mr. Bush, to verify all the numbers and and get our questions answered that we received this evening.
Okay. As as part of the discussion here, Mr. Mayor, there's a a question from the public. It said, why were residents in the affected area not notified before this? But the administration also provided a notification list of all the surrounding neighbors of the notification of of this of this item. Can you please speak on that? Were notifications sent out regarding this agenda item to all the surrounding neighbors?
They were sent out. I do have a list of them. And they were sent out in the fashion that the I receive. I I never send those out before I have the agenda. That's sent over by the BZA and PC chairs. That's finalized and it can be circulated. It's circulated with a letter that says you're getting this, you have the opportunity to address it in the in a meeting such as this or send a letter to Village Hall and it will be read into the record. So that's it was sent out a week before. That's the timely manner that we normally send those out.
I appreciate you addressing that 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 concern.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bush, were you, I want to make sure that you had all your extended time on the floor for your your question and concern around the parking with OHM partners?
Yes, I've had enough. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the board have a any questions, comments, or would like to have a have a suggested starting point for a motion?
Please go ahead if you had suggested language.
All right, thank you, Mrs. May. Here is some beginning language here for a proposed motion request for to approve the variance codified ordinance 1151.07 off-street parking spaces to allow additional spaces. The requirements of codified ordinance is 1151.07 imposing various requirements on and off for off-street parking spaces are hereby relieved to the extent required to permit erection of the parking facilities substantially as depicted in the site plan and other presentations and exhibits offered by the applicant at this hearing with such relief subject to and conditioned upon the following requirements and restrictions. Such variance is granted subject to consummate in issuance of a corresponding use variance by the board permitting the use of said facility as a delivery station, as well as any other variances necessary to permit erection of the associated building and other facilities within the office professional district. Such variance provides no relief from any additional requirements mandated by other sections, subchapters or chapters of the codified ordinances of the Village of Boston Heights. Such variance is granted subject to conformance by the applicant with all presentations and exhibits offered by the applicant at this hearing and subject to all other applicable laws, codes, regulations and inspections, as well as the usual approval of site plan by the planning commission with such concurrence of the engineer as may be required by that commission or the codified ordinances of the Village of Boston Heights. Such grant of variance shall not run with the land but shall continue for the life of the facility first erected in conformance with these requirements and shall extend to current and all successor owners of the parcel and or the facility and for all legal and approved uses thereof, but shall terminate and shall be revoked upon the demolition, destruction or other substantial removal of said facility except as otherwise approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals upon application and review. And furthermore, if the erection of such facilities is not initiated through procuring of permits and beginning of construction within one year of approved approval of the site plan by the planning commission, or if no such approval is granted by the planning commission within one year of the grant of this variance, then this grant of variance is revoked. Mr. Pitchford? Do you have your addition?
Yeah, I I forward over to the mail and further that the variance shall be revoked if the user fails to abide by all zoning rules, regulations, permits and approvals, including but not limited to the final site plan approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to see Arthur's suggested language added.
Arthur, I believe that that was for your your dialogue with Mr. Bush around final inspection?
Yes, it's just related to our further review. By our, I mean village staff and OHMs for the review of the of the traffic study report.
All right, I'll put that for further review of the traffic study by OHM. Final inspection and approval. Thank you for all the the smart attorneys that put in some of those zinger words there as well. Makes it a little extra spicy for us tonight. All right, if if I could get the board now to either suggest an approval or dismissal based around this language, please.
Kathy, was that your motion?
Sure.
Then then I second.
That would be a so moved.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mrs. May, so moved, and then did I hear a second? Ron Dick?
Mr. Dick.
Yes, I second.
Mr. Dick seconded the 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 motion as as spoken into the record here. Okay, is there any discussion around the motion? All right. Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Dick?
Yes.
Mr. Poliak?
Yes.
And Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes and the request for variance of codified ordinance is 1151.07 off-street parking spaces to allow additional spaces has been granted. All right, Mr. Codrea, I hope you are ready. It looks like our agenda items are have been done. Congratulations to the applicant. Mayor, the administration will take care of the granting of those variances for the for the applicants.
Yes, I'll want all that paperwork that you have, Mr. Poliak, so we can get that generated.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that.
Because we do have the record, but it's always nice to have the-
Thank you. All right, let me make sure that I'm doing everything correct here as I'm this is the first time I've chaired a meeting in in a few years. Excuse me. All right. Is there any more open business in the BZA? Old business, seeing none. Is there any new business beyond the agenda items? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Poliak, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Can I go ahead and just hear all those in favor, please provide a sign? Can I go ahead and just hear, all those in favor, please provide a sign?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, opposed? All right, BZA is adjourned at eight fifty-two.
We'd like to thank you for, for your consideration this evening of this application. Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you, and thank you for your, everybody's patience. I really do appreciate it. John, it's, uh, the show is yours.
All right, I, I suggest because of the length of the BZA meeting, it's now eight minutes, eight minutes until nine. And let's take about a seven-minute break before we start up again with the planning commission. So let's all be back here by about nine o'clock to start planning commission. Thank you.
I don't have a vote, but I second that, John.
Planning commission will come to order. Mr. Mayor, roll call, please. Mr. Mayor, unmute.
Okay, I'm calling to order at nine o'clock. 9:00 PM, Mike Bush? Robert Campbell?
Unmute, Bob.
I know he's on.
Yeah, he's on. Bob, unmute the button down at the bottom.
Who is Steven?
There we go.
There you go, Bob.
Okay.
Okay, Bob's on. John Codrea?
Present.
Don Poliak?
Here.
And I'm here, all present, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, the first item on our agenda this evening is the application with respect to property located. This is on Chittenden Road 6291. Chittenden Road applicant is donor limited. Who is here to speak on behalf of this applicant?
You, you jumped, John. You're on the second application. Cars is the first one.
Cars, is anybody here from Cars tonight?
Mr. Chair, no, but we have to officially deny the application based on the information that I have to deliver.
All right, if no one's here on behalf of the applicant, Cars Enterprises, the matter has already been previously continued to allow the applicant an opportunity to appear before the planning commission. The applicant has not taken that opportunity, therefore, at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to deny the application.
I will so move.
Is there a second?
Yes.
It's been moved by Mr. Bush and seconded by Mr. Campbell to deny the application of Cars Enterprises. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, the application of Cars Enterprises is denied. Next item on the agenda then will be donor limited for 6291 Chittenden Road, request for approval of site plan. Who is here to speak on behalf of this applicant?
Hey, gentlemen, my name is Greg Donner, and my son, Christopher, who is the president of the business, is sitting here alongside me.
Uh, Mr. Donner, do you have a video or you're just audio?
Uh, let me check here for you. There we go.
Great. Okay, so you're Mr. Greg Donner, and your son, Chris Donner, is with you, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and which one of you wishes to testify tonight?
I will.
Okay, Mr. Chris Donner, would you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. State your name, please, and spell your last name for our record.
Christopher Donner, D-O-H-N-E-R.
And what is your position with the applicant, donor limited?
I'm the president.
Okay, and for our record, what is the interest of donor limited in the premises at 6291 Chittenden Road?
Landscaping.
Well, are, are you the owner of the premises, or are you a tenant?
Owner.
Owner, okay, thank you. And do you have any documents that you want the planning commission to review tonight as part of your application?
Yes.
Okay, and can you describe, you have a copy of those documents?
Sorry, cut out, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, do you have a copy of those documents?
Yeah, I have a diagram of the property.
Okay.
And I also show, in the red here that's on the diagram, I, displayed is what we're, this is what we intend to put on the property.
I'm just looking for my copy right now, okay?
Okay.
Okay, uh, Exhibit A, are yours labeled too, like the ones that we have, Mr. Donner?
Um, no.
Okay, uh, so, somebody put in a red box at the upper left of your application, the words Exhibit A. And then the next page that I have is called Exhibit B, and it says at the top, 6291 Chittenden Road Aerial. Do you have that document?
Yes.
Okay, and then the next thing looks like a photograph, and it's labeled Exhibit C, and it's a picture of a sign that says Impact, and then there looks like a structure behind that. Is that your, is that your exhibit also?
Uh, no.
Well. We have an Exhibit D called an ARC GIS web map. Is that?
Yes, I have that.
Okay, and then E, E is titled Front View, and it's a, a document that's really hard to, hard to read. It's got a bunch of measurements, thirty foot, thirty foot, sixteen foot, hundred and sixty-six foot total. And then F is a picture of a large canvas dome, small canvas dome.
Yes, I have that.
These storage bins, okay. Well, let's, uh, let's go back to the, uh, let's go back to the start. Go to that first, first one that's labeled Exhibit B, that's called 6291 Chittenden Road Aerial, and tell us what we're looking at.
It's just an over, overhead view of property. And, and, and how it's situated right now, and the, the red box on the property is where we intend to put the domes that are listed on it, I believe, you said Exhibit E for yourself?
Yeah, and are those domes, there, there's a red circle, you know, you got a, a red line going around the perimeter of the property, and then there's a red square at the west side of the property. Is, is that where you're intending to put those domes?
Um, in the, where the red square is, yes.
Okay.
I have it on, on the east side of the property, basically. Here's.
That you're, you, that's the east side? How can that be the east side?
No, I mean, actually, I would say it's the north side of the property, actually.
Well, northwest, it's the northwest corner, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Greg Donner, you want to testify too?
Well, I'm looking at.
Mr. Chris Donner? Or no?
I am.
You're Chris, Greg, do you want to testify too?
Yes, I can talk as well.
Okay, raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, so in answer to my question, that square on Exhibit B is in the northwest corner of the property, and that's where your intent is to erect those domes, is that correct?
Well, actually, if, if I'm looking at the drawing correctly, the entrance way to, to the property is on the west, but the domes are going to be on the, the northeast quadrant of the property, correct?
Exhibit, Mr. Codrea, I think he's speaking of Exhibit D, not Exhibit B.
Yeah, I'm looking at B right now, which says 6291 Chittenden Road Aerial. And that, that has a red outline of the perimeter of the property. Okay. In that outline, in the northwest corner of the prop, northwest corner of the property, there's a, a red square.
Okay.
So I just want to know what that red square is.
The red square is just where the domes are going to go. Where? I don't believe we're looking at the same.
So on Exhibit. Can I provide some clarity? Exhibit B. The question is on Exhibit B, there's two squares. Mr. Chair, can I be recognized to provide clarity to the exhibits, please?
Sure, Mr. Schmidt, raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear the testimony, and you'll give in this matter will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay.
Arthur Schmidt, zoning inspector, OHM advisors, Schmidt spelled S-C-H-M-I-D-T. Exhibit B and Exhibit C in the packet that, that you were sent over were additional items that I included for additional reference point for the owner and operator. So on Exhibit B, what is outlined are the two parcels under the ownership of the applicant, Chris and Greg. The smaller outline is of the existing building, which is to remain, just to make it clear that that existing building that is on the site plan is what is to remain.
Okay, thanks.
And then Exhibit C is an aerial image to show you.
What's Exhibit C? Is that the existing building?
That is the existing building with the existing signage that is currently on the property to show what is going to remain. So Exhibit D is the exhibit in which Greg, Chris Donner is referencing in relation to where the storage bins will be located.
Okay, and that is the northeast, northeast quadrant?
Correct.
Okay, so has, has the applicant seen Exhibits B and C?
I've sent them over to him. Greg gets in, it would have been in your email to show you those two.
All right. So Exhibit E is the exhibit provided by the applicant. And applicant, do I understand correctly, then, that your testimony is that the three bones, I guess, or the two domes and three storage bins, right? Is that what?
There's a two dome and a four storage bin.
Okay, two domes and four storage bins, and those are all going in to the red rectangle on Exhibit D, which is labeled at the top ARC GIS web map.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, let's go on to what's labeled Exhibit E, which is titled Front View. Tell me what that is that we're looking at.
You're talking about the domes?
No, the one before the domes, it's a bunch of measurements, looks like you got something that measures thirty feet by thirty feet by thirty feet by thirty by sixteen by sixteen. Total length along that is a hundred and sixty-six feet. And it says front view at the top.
It, it, those are the actual widths of the domes. The large dome's going to be thirty feet wide, the smaller one's going to be sixteen feet wide. And the three-story urches are going to be thirty-three, thirty feet wide, and the one-story bin will be sixteen feet wide. That gives us a total of a hundred and sixty-six.
Okay, and is, is that the configuration, you're gonna, you're gonna put them in on the property? In other words, the thirty-foot wide, thirty-foot wide, thirty-foot wide, thirty-foot wide, followed by the two sixteen-foot wides?
Correct.
Okay. And then these pictures that are labeled Exhibit F, large canvas dome, dome, small canvas dome, three thirty by twenty-four storage bins, and one sixteen by twenty-four storage bin. Where are those located right now? Where, in other words, where do those pictures come from?
They're in our current shop, yeah, which is Twinsburg.
Okay, and so what you're asking us for permission to do is erect exactly the same structures on this property on Heinz Hill, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Does anyone else on the commission have any questions for the applicants?
So.
Yeah. What is, uh, going to be contained in the bins?
One of them, I mean, mulch, salt.
Landscaping.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
One question, in Exhibit, hold on, let me get to it, on Exhibit C, which is the building, is, is that going to be used as office space, or what is that existing building going to be used for?
Which one are you looking at? Which building?
The, the building that's, that's shown in Exhibit C, the photograph?
Was it, I don't have, I'm not looking at.
I have not, I have not printed that one out yet.
It looks like a, it, it looks like a house?
Yes, the house in the front, the house in the front is going to serve as our office space, and then the building in the back, which is a pole building, is going to be our maintenance building.
Okay, yeah, I can't see the, yeah, the photograph doesn't show both buildings, but I, I, I know that that's back there, okay. Uh, signage, it looks to me like it still has the original signage from the previous owner, I'm guessing, Impact?
Yes.
Are, are you planning to change that signing, or are you, you going under the same business name?
Um, currently, their, their intentions are to remove it, and as of right now, I have no intentions to put anything up.
Okay, so no signage? You're not asking us to approve any signage this evening?
No.
Okay. So you will have to come back and see us if you do decide to put a sign up?
Okay.
Have you had a chance to look at that photo yet with the building in the front and the sign, Mr. Donner? Have you pulled that up yet?
No, I have not been on my computer to, to pull that up.
Okay, all right, well, then let's just concentrate on the, on the three that you provided us. Uh, the first one is the ARC GIS web map that shows both parcels. that, uh, shows both parcels, and in the northeast quadrant, it has a rectangle where you testified that you intend to erect the storage bins and the two canvas domes. The second thing is something that you have labeled front view, and it shows those various measurements, thirty, 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 sixteen, and sixteen for a total of a hundred and sixty-six feet. And the third one is the picture of the large and small canvas domes and the three storage bins. Do those three exhibits fairly and accurately depict what you are asking this planning commission to approve?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Applicant, do you have any other testimony that you want to present?
Not at the moment.
Mr. Schmidt, does the village have any other, uh, testimony?
Yeah, the only thing I want to add, so again, the applicant is here seeking their site plan approval, given that there'd be a new business coming into, uh, the village, assuming the existing facilities, uh, as the applicant indicated, uh, of the house that'll act as their office space, uh, and then the existing pole barn, uh, building, uh, which will be, uh, their, their maintenance building. All of this meets code within the Lake Manufacturing District, um, that also includes the accessory structures meet, uh, the guidelines, uh, laid out in, uh, in the zoning code. Um, so what we are here again is to give the approval, uh, for their occupancy, uh, within the new, uh, business. Um, so it's our recommendation, staff's recommendation, uh, support of the approved application. Um, we have been in contact, uh, with Miss, uh, both donors, uh, since we have both donors here, uh, since they have been interested in the site. So they're aware of all of the, the guidelines and procedures, um, relating to, um, how are they, how are they going to make their site approval?
Do, 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 I'm going to hit plus four. Who are we listening to?
Tom, you're on, you're, you're, we can hear you, Tom. Put yourself on.
Sorry.
Uh, that is, um, uh, that is everything, so, uh, if, uh, if approved by this board, uh, we will go through, Mr., uh, both Greg and Chris Donner have submitted their, uh, permits for the accessory units, and we'll go through and, uh, conduct our, uh, final review, uh, and move forward with the, uh, approval of their, uh, accessory units as well.
Right, and just for the record, this is, what we're asking for today is final site plan approval.
Correct.
Okay. All right, uh, at, at this point in time, is there anyone not on the planning commission who has any questions for the applicant? Questions for the representative of the village? Or any testimony to offer with respect to this applicant? Mr. Poliak, do you see any questions coming in?
Mr. Chairman, I do not. I do not on this, on this topic.
Okay, thank you. Uh, then, uh, is there a motion with respect to this application? And the chair would suggest that if the motion is going to be to approve that, uh, we note that. Well, that's, that's another question for the zoning inspector. Is, is this, is this a conditional use in this?
No, permitted.
It's a permitted use, okay. Then the chair would entertain a, uh, motion to approve the application for site plan approval subject to the following. Uh, the applicant may not, let me ask, well, let me ask the applicant, are you going to do any retail sales from the premises?
I do not at this, at this time have any intentions to do retail sales.
Mr. Schmidt, would retail sales be approved anyway, as an approved use?
Uh, yes, it would be, and actually, I wanted to amend, uh, my, my statement, uh, Mr. Chair. It's technically a conditional use, um, because it's the combination of, of their office space and just, just their warehousing.
Okay, so then we can, we can impose reasonable conditions then. All right, thank you. Uh. And the chair would suggest, uh, if a member wishes to offer a motion to the application, uh, that we, uh, make a statement, uh, that we are analyzing it as a conditional use, and that, uh, we are approving, uh, the site plan upon the following, uh, conditions. Number one, uh, that the applicant will meet immediately upon commencement of our operation, register with the Regional Income Tax Agency, and provide evidence of saying to the village that, uh, the site plan, as depicted in the exhibits, is approved. A site development and construction will conform in all respects to the approved site plan, and will comply with all provisions of the Planning and Zoning Code, including but not limited to all requirements, uh, of the, uh, district wherein the property is located. Uh, with all requirements imposed by the, uh, state, uh, fire marshal, the village fire chief, uh, the Ohio Department of Health, Summit County Health Department, and all other requirements imposed by the codified ordinances of the village, the laws and regulations of the county of Summit, the laws and regulations of the state of Ohio, laws and regulations of the United States, and all requirements imposed by Summit Soil and Water Conservation District. Is there a motion to that effect?
I will still move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second John.
Thank you. Uh, it has been moved and seconded to approve the application uh, pursuant to the language recited by the chair. Is there any discussion upon the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Mayor, roll call, please.
Um, Mike Bush.
Yes.
Robert Campbell.
Yes.
Don Poliak.
Yes.
John Caudry.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you. Uh, the motion carries. So, uh, Mr. Donner, you'll be working with, uh, the village, uh, zoning inspector, uh, to complete this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item, uh, on our agenda is the application of Pure Development, Inc. Uh, for property, uh, I'll just recite the parcels, thirteen zero zero seven two four, thirteen zero zero six zero five, thirteen zero zero nine four one, and thirteen zero zero seven two three, along Heinz Hill Road. Who is here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, I am Mr. Caudry, and my name's Erv Sugarman. Uh, I represent the applicant, Pure Development Incorporated.
Okay, uh, Mr. Sugarman, I do it a little bit differently than what we did in the BZA, and, uh, I, I generally do not expect that the attorney for the applicant offers sworn testimony, uh, before the planning commission, uh, un- unless that was your intent in presenting your client's case via your own sworn testimony. Otherwise, uh, I would entertain an outline of your, of your client's application, and then, uh, offer testimony, including authentic, authentication, authentication of your exhibits, uh, by the sworn testimony of one of your witnesses. So how do you want to proceed with that?
I'll proceed as you wish, and that's fine. I'll, uh, I'll give a brief outline and overview.
Thank you.
The application, and then I'll, uh, uh, I'll ask for a couple of, uh, authenticate the, uh, the, the documents that are going to be presented. Uh, and again, we appreciate, uh, your patience of being here, uh, this evening and hearing this, uh, application. With me this evening are Elizabeth Brier and Jody Sharp from Pure Development, uh, Bill Lewis from, uh, Bowen, who's the architect for this project, and Shannon Mitchley and Kyle DeGiulio, who, uh, are representatives of the tenant. Um, we will acknowledge receipt this afternoon of a staff report that has been prepared, uh, by Mr. Schmidt and his colleagues at OHM, and we appreciate, uh, the efforts that they have made to, uh, re- review this, and we'll talk about, uh, some of their comments a little bit later in our presentation. I think that all of you were present during the BZA hearing, so I'm going to walk through, uh, some of the issues, perhaps a little bit more quickly than I did, uh, at the BZA. Uh, as you're aware, we're talking about a delivery station, uh, that's going on to this site. Uh, the underlying zoning is set forth in the staff review. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Petros, who I believe is, I see his name still on there, uh, who's the owner, who will testify, uh, a little bit later on about, uh, his efforts to market the property and why this is the, uh, the perfect development for the site. Uh, as we indicated, uh, there, there is going to be, um, a, a delivery station that has access to the Ohio Turbike, to Route Eight, uh, to the various roads that surround this, uh, this project. Um, we have done, uh, a lot of work trying to shield this property, uh, through landscaping. Uh, we'll talk about it in a little bit. Mr. Lewis will talk about that. Uh, the lighting, uh, is, uh, there are zero foot candles at the perimeter of this site, so we don't anticipate that there will be any light that is going to be emanating from, uh, from the project. Uh, there are a number of questions, uh, that, uh, OHM had regarding the traffic considerations. We have had a, um, a traffic impact study that was performed for this site, uh, and, uh, there were some issues that have been raised that we'll try to address, uh, in a little while. Uh, in terms, uh, as I've indicated, we have done extensive landscaping. Uh, we also have some issues regarding the building, uh, and the, uh, site signage plan. Excuse me, we, um, the signage, uh, ha- has met and does meet the Connecticut Western Reserve uh, requirements that have been set forth by the village. Uh, there are, there is going to be some testimony as to the front of the building. Uh, doesn't lend itself well to the Connecticut Western Reserve style, and we'll talk a little bit, I think Jody, uh, Sharp may talk a little bit about that later in terms of what we're planning for the front of the building with the permission of the PZC. Uh, the monument sign, uh, does meet the Connecticut Western Reserve. Uh, and, and I think that you've all heard about some of the sightline issues, uh, during the BZA hearing, where, um, for the most part, for, for the maximum amount possible, this, uh, site is, this building and the parking spaces there are shielded, uh, from sight. We are asking for, uh, fifteen hundred and ninety spaces there, uh, under the code fifteen eleven are permitted. Uh, the BZA, uh, has approved that, as you've all heard, uh, and we're going to be working with the folk from OHM uh, on, on refining some of those parking issues as, uh, as we go forward. Um, I will tell you that we are looking at two methods of ingress and egress off of Dean Memorial Parkway. We're going to be, uh, speaking to ODOTs, uh, as far as, as far as that goes. Uh, on page six of the recommendation of OHM, there are several recommendations, uh, and I can tell you that we're in agreement, uh, with those recommendations. If, uh, in fact, the planning and zoning commission sees fit, grant our application, uh, this evening. So I think that at this point in time, uh, I'd like to just move into, uh, some of the presentation. I'm going to start with Bill Lewis from, uh, from Bowen, who I will ask to identify, uh, the various exhibits, uh, and I'll just go through them one by one and, uh, ask Bill to, to authenticate them for you tonight.
Uh, thank you. Uh, before you go on, um, uh, the chair just wants to, uh, advise that I had asked Mr. Sugarman to provide an exhibit list that he emailed, uh, to me. Uh, and I had one question for you, Mr. Sugarman, based on that list. There are Exhibits A through H, and the packet that I have has, uh, two more exhibits. Uh, one is called a preliminary landscape plan, and the second one down at the bo- bottom says floor plan. And so I was wondering if we could add as Exhibits I and J to your exhibit list, those two documents.
Uh, sure, you can add those. Bill, do you have those exhibits and are able to address those?
Yes, yeah, so, um, it is.
All right, then, uh. Uh, the, the second question I had for you, Mr. Sugarman, uh, after reviewing, uh, the application and the, uh, engineer's report, it seems to me that we're here for a preliminary site plan approval, not a final site plan approval. Would you agree with that?
Uh, I was hopeful that we would be here for a final set site plan re- uh, review, subject to the PZC, uh, adding some conditions on that approval that deal with the issues that OHM has raised. Um, it would not be our desire or intention to have to come back to the PZC as long as these issues, uh, that are addressed in the OHM report can be and should be, we believe, addressed by the engineers.
But don't, don't we need exhibits that, uh, you know, show us the building that is proposed to be erected on this property?
Uh, we have an outline of those, but we are hopeful that we can just address that through the engineers.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We don't have the final plans for the building itself.
Do you mean, Mr. Chairman, this is, Mr., this is Marshall Bischford. Are you saying the engineering plans? Because my, my read of the exhibits has a, uh, an image of the building, the location of the building, um, kind of the outside of where the doors are and those kinds of things, unless I'm looking at something different.
I'm not sure what you're looking at. Which exhibit are you, are you talking about? Oh, the elevations, is that it?
That's the one that I'm thinking of.
Okay, all right.
Landscape, wow.
No, okay, I see that now.
And there's one also, a floor plan, which is the inside of the building, if I understand, and then the other one is the outside of the building.
Wait, let's see, uh. Let me take a look here, elevations, elevations, okay. All right, why, why don't we do this then? Uh, let's, because my other concern was a traffic, uh, uh, study, and I was, you know, I was thinking that maybe we ought to, we ought to see a traffic study before we can uh, vote on a, a final approval of this project. But, uh, why don't we go ahead with the testimony of your first witness, and let's have your witness identify each one of these exhibits and tell us what each one is.
That would be great, thanks.
Who are you calling, Mr. Lewis?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. State your name, please. Spell your last name, and tell us what your position is. Spell your last name, and tell us what your position is with the applicant.
My name is Bill Lewis, L-E-W-I-S. I am with Richard Bowen and Associates, and we are the architects for the project.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bill.
Maybe the easiest is just kind of walk through each of the exhibits provided. I think I've got them numbered correctly here. Exhibit A would be the overall site plan. That's kind of the colored plan that really depicts the parking, the ingress, the egress from the site, the proposed ingress egress. You know, which drive aisles will accommodate the van, the van parking in the delivery van, ingress egress from the site, which will be the associate parking, be the line haulers or the, you know, the semi-traffic. So that would be Exhibit A. Exhibit B is a striping and signage plan, and really the purpose that it's a smaller black and white site plan, that really shows the, you know, some of the pavement markings, but really it shows the monument signs, the directional signage. Directional signage located on that plan at each of the van entry points. Actually, the van entry point and then the line hauler entry point. After that, we have Exhibits C and D, which are the building elevations proposed in their current forms. Exhibit E is really just an enlarged entry elevation that kind of relates more to the proposed building signage. Exhibit F, those are images of the proposed site signage. So that would be the monument sign at the associate entrance as well as the directional signage at the van and truck entries. Exhibit G is the lighting plan. So the intent there is to show that, you know, all the light for the site will be contained on site. We use cutoff fixtures at all of the perimeters, around the perimeter of the site. Exhibit H, that's our, really the site sections and some of the retaining wall depiction. So this is where we try to show some of the topography that's going on with the site. There is a fairly substantial grade change that we're having to address with the layout of the site. So this exhibit shows some of those wall locations as well as some of the views that you'll see from the roadways. Exhibit I and J are the two that I think weren't originally on the list. Let's see, one of those would have been the true landscape plan. So that's, you know, shows the berm areas, the plantings around the perimeter as well as within the parking fields. And then J is the actual building footprint. So it's provided to see, you know, where the office areas are located, a little bit about how the building works, if we need to get into that as well.
Okay, thank you. Could I ask, anyone who is not actually speaking, please go ahead and mute because we're losing some bandwidth there. And I have to ask Mr. Lewis a question now because the screen froze during his testimony. So, Mr. Lewis, with respect to Exhibit A, can you tell me what that yellow arrow, in and out arrow signifies at the top of Exhibit A? And also, there's a green arrow also. What are those?
So the arrows, the colors go to represent the different types of traffic. So the yellow that you're seeing there, that's the associate parking area. So that's that lot there. It's an ingress egress intersection lined up with Bass Pro that will accommodate the office workers as well as any visitors to the facility. The green arrows are there to show van movement throughout the site and as well as direction. So those are one-way access points either onto the site or out onto the roads from the site. There are two access points on Heinz Hill, and then there's, well, there's two on Dean Memorial as well. And then you'll see the red arrows at the southernmost point of the Dean Memorial access there. That's for the line hauler or the big, the semi-trucks serving the facility.
Thank you. And then what is Exhibit B?
Exhibit B, really, it's an overall site plan, but that was mainly to show the signage. So we had a plan that kind of went with our sign package. It identified the locations of the monument sign and the directional signs.
And do Exhibits A through J fairly and accurately depict the project that you are seeking approval for?
Yes, as of this point, that is the layout and the building footprint that we're seeking approval for.
Why would they ever vary? I mean, if we approve this, why would it change?
It will change. Well, right now, our engineers are engineering the site, so they're detailing the retaining walls that we're showing there. You know, they've got to get into stormwater detention retention. A lot of the engineering, it won't significantly impact it as well, much at all, we're hoping, but it may cause, you know, a drive aisle to shift a couple feet this direction, that direction. But for all intents and purposes, this is the plan that we're proposing to construct.
Thank you. Any other members of the commission have any questions for Mr. Lewis?
I have a question about the, I believe it's I, the preliminary landscape plan. I don't know who would like to speak to that.
I can speak to that thing.
Okay. So I know one of the concerns of the residents and also is also called out in the staff report is the barrier or the setback from Old Eight Road for the residential. And I noticed on I, it says proposed berm or plant bed. Are you not willing to commit at this point that that will be a berm in order to block the site of the van from the residence? Is there any reason why you can't say that that shouldn't be an or?
We should change that to say and. So as of right now, we are getting into the grading plan. We are planning a five to seven-foot berm that entire length.
Okay.
With planting on top.
Very good. So that would, now, and again, I, since I don't know what company you're representing, I don't know how large these vans are, but would that, would you expect that then from the residents across Old Eight Road that they would not be able to see the vans that are parked there?
Correct. Yep, so that would be kind of what we intended to show with Exhibit H on the site sections, that that top section, it would be the left-hand side of that top section. We try to show, you know, what's going on with the sightlines. So Old Eight Road, that's the high side of our site. It's about 30-foot higher in elevation than the proposed finished floor of the building.
Right.
That, taking that into consideration with, you know, five to seven-foot berm with landscaping on top, the sightlines, as you can see there, the building will be fully shielded from view as well as the parking field.
I guess my concern, my concern speaking for the residents would be not so much the building because, as we can see here, the building's actually a very long way away. My concern would be vans coming in potentially late in the evening with headlights on, you know, shining into residents' front yards, et cetera, and that. And if you're telling me that a seven-foot berm would prevent that, then I'm satisfied with that.
Yeah, as well as a natural grade that ingress from Heinz Hill is probably just by the natural fall of the site, you know, 10 to 15 feet below the elevation of Old Eight.
So you're expecting the van parking would actually be, the elevation of the van parking might actually be below the Old Eight Road?
Yeah, it will fall with the site to a certain degree across the site from west to east until you get to kind of the building area that'll be level, and then it will fall again down to Dean Memorial.
If I could, what about noise? Vans and the semis that are going to be coming on the property generate noise, don't they?
Yeah, I think maybe that gets in to some of the traffic study and how the site would operate. I know we've got people that could speak.
Hey, Bill, this is Jody, I can speak to them.
All right, so who wants to testify?
I will.
Mr. Sharp, Mr. Sugarman, is that all right?
Absolutely.
All right, Mr. Sharp, raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jody Sharp, last name S-H-A-R-P, with Pure Development, developer on the project, located Indianapolis, Indiana. In response to the question regarding noise, we did perform a noise study of this site, and the results of that came back that the noise produced on-site by the function and operation of the vehicles and the facility itself do not exceed the local noise ordinances of the area.
Thank you. Any other questions from any?
Yeah, John, I do. I have it to Mr. Lewis, I believe. From Heinz Hill down Old Eight, there's about, I don't know, 200, 300 feet of supposedly berm there already, which is in terrible shape. But beyond that is all woods. Now, is it possible just to keep those woods there instead of building a whole berm all the way down to the turnpike? I mean, that's all natural woods there, and
Right.
the timber there is probably in pretty good shape. To leave the woods there rather than building a berm seems to be more a natural.
Right. We've got about, I think it's a little over 100-foot of currently what we're showing is landscaped area. We could take a look and see how much of that is wooded. I'd have to go back and look at our current grading plan to see how the proposed grades of the parking in that area fall if they're in line with the natural grades.
Well, I'm saying at least to leave 100, but that berm is going to be 100 feet, right?
The bermed area is about 100 feet wide.
Yeah, so if you leave 100 feet of those trees there and then remove everything else, that would be better than, I think it would be better than trying to put a berm there and building something when you already have a natural boundary right there. And it would look nice, I mean, people would be more familiar with it than taking that all down and trying to do something else. It's a thought. But do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand. I think it's something that, I know I've driven by there a number of times. I just, I can't recall how close those, the streets start to the road and how many, you know.
Well, they're probably in the same line as the berm does, that's already there. I don't think it's, I think it's pretty much in line with the berm and the trees are pretty much, if you go down the street, it looks, you know, I mean, it was offset of the other one. It's a pretty straight line down the street, down Old Eight, with the woods and the trees, which I think would make a better, what do you want to call it, cushion between the street and the cars. Like I said, just a thought. Because there really isn't that much already done. And what is already done there needs a lot of improvement.
Mr. Mayor, did you have a question?
I did. I think we talked about this a little earlier when we were meeting with just a small group of the people involved tonight. Part of what we thought about leaving those trees, and it seems like a great idea. The only problem is, in the winter, when all the foliage is off, the lights from those vans are going to shine right through those trees. Whereas if you have a mound that's planted on top of, you're going to have more of a barrier. So I think they were going to look at the elevations like Bill was talking about right now, because if that elevation turns about to be high enough that the lights can shine through those trees.
Well, of course, yeah, you don't want that, you know.
I don't know if that's going to be an advantage. I agree with you, Bobby. You would think leaving the trees would be better, but it may not. Yeah, well, at the corner where the mound already is, if you think about the ground behind that, that's probably 10, 12.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Depends on, and what we had talked about early in these meetings is, up at that, the southern part, we don't know how low that's going to be. You would have to see if that would be something that could work. That was the only comment I had.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Sharp, your first name is Jody, J-O-D-Y, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Sugarman, do you have any other witnesses you wish to present?
Mr. Petros is, he'd like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission, but certainly would like to give him that opportunity as well.
Okay, Mr. Petros, did you want to testify?
I'm all right. If you're okay, we're okay.
All right. You know, you're on twice.
Yeah, I tried to kill the other iPad. I don't know what technology is overwhelming, sorry.
I thought you were trying to overwhelm us with your presence. All right, no other witnesses, Mr. Sugarman?
No, you know, we certainly have the folks here who were representative of the tenant if there are any questions for that, but that would be the extent of our presentation.
Okay. Then I guess I would ask the zoning inspector to provide testimony with respect to the report that has been provided to us. Mr. Schmidt, raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please proceed.
Arthur Schmidt, O H M Advisors, Village Zoning Inspector, Schmidt spelled S C H M I D T. So thank you. So to direct you just straight to the staff report, I'm going to go through a few items. A few comments from staff as we reviewed, hopefully to answer a few additional questions. And then I'll turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Brian Gorog, to talk about a few items as well. So just so that we're all on the literal same page and section. I'm going to be addressing comments in section C, additional comments, beginning on page two. But I'm specifically going to start at page four under the landscape plan section. So as indicated and discussed previously, staff does have a few comments that will be directed and addressed with the design team during our our plan review. But in terms of of what's being shown and how it's relating to the zoning, the landscaping standards for the building setback and foundations are good and in compliance with her with our code. The ground signage was not indicated in the landscaping plan. It was indicated in their signage plan. The only note that we're putting in, the only note that we have there is that we do have requirements for landscaping around those ground mounted signs, which we'll provide in our staff reports. And beyond that, as it relates to the landscaping, we do have some discussions or some comments, excuse me, related to the ratio of of trees provided for the interior parking lot. I apologize for the spelling error, not parling lot, parking lot, that we will bring up to the design team and have discussions over. As it relates to the lighting plan, so that's, this is the next section, the lighting plan. As indicated in the testimony by Mr. Sugarman, we did review it and it, the plan does meet or exceed the standards that are outlined in the overlay section chapter. As Mr. Sugarman rightfully indicated, the foot candles, which are surrounding the property lines of the project site are at zero. And that's, that's the key aspect. That's what we're looking for to make sure there's no light spillage to the surrounding properties. And that's not the case. And as indicated in my report as well, or in our report as well, throughout the site, we're averaging roughly a one point four foot candle average, which is within our standards. In terms of of the building, I know Mr. Sugarman and others had had addressed this a bit in their opening testimony. It would be our recommendation by staff that the office facade portion of the building, so that would be that that piece of the building which is visible from Bass Pro Drive intersection be of a natural appearance, either brick or stone, which would meet the architectural design standards set forth within the overlay district and would also be in compliance or in in the same nature as what was done related to the Our House project across the street for precedent. The next section, the signage. So again, in this, in that plan sheet, they showed one monument sign and then two directional signage pieces. So based on what we're looking at right now, and and this is a question that we have to the design team, just to make sure that we're reviewing everything correctly. The proposed square footage of the actual sign, so it's just a signed face. We're not talking about the stone that's being associated with it is above the lack, is above the maximum allotment within the code. But given its location and given some of the other signage that we have within the area, it is that that square footage is in keeping with the similar signs in the area. So we're talking about the Our House signage. We're talking about the signage to go into the Costco development. We're talking about the Akron Children's signage. So while it does exceed our maximum allotment, it is keeping in context with the surrounding signage. And again, it is within the design standards set within the overlay district. The two directional signage are approximately thirty square feet. And again, we're talking about the actual sign, not including the portions of the of the base. Those are in compliance. And then I just made a note here, and this is going to be a note for the design team for the the building signage, just to have clarity on on the actual dimensions. I know right now there are slightly rough dimensions probably for that signage. And I know there should be some some details to come. And I just indicated in our report what our zoning allowance is, and that allowance is based on the frontage, the primary frontage of the building, which in this case would be the north elevation. But due to the fact of this site being on the corner, they also get additional signage, square footage for that secondary frontage, which would be the east elevation. However, that signage allotment, just to make clear to the design team and to Planning Commission, is still based off of the front front, frontage that you have there. It's just a different, it's point seven five for the frontage for the primary. Mr. Lewis, I know you you're looking at me intently on the screen. So it's point seven five times the frontage for the primary allotment, and then it's point five times the the frontage on the north elevation for the secondary allotment. So in my report, that is roughly like two ninety for the primary and about a hundred and ninety three ish, a hundred and ninety three point eight square footage for the secondary signage on there. And again, I noted on there, primary frontage for where the sign could be placed would be the north elevation. Secondary would be that east elevation as we have on there. The next section, which I think is the most critical section, as we talk about a lot of these things, is the sightline study. So we had asked to, we had asked the design team, they provided for us just that verification of what you are actually going to be able to see from the public right of way as you're looking into the site. So as Mr. Lewis had indicated in his testimony, that sightline study PDF shows in site section A and in site section B, what is visible from the public right of way. So you see that in site section A, the combination of the site topography and the perimeter landscaping, which includes the the proposed berm is going to impede the view into the site, which means it's impeding the view into the parking lot area as well as to the building. And then the site section B shows a similar condition, but obviously we're looking at a at the primary frontage. And so we're again, due to the site topography, due to the perimeter landscaping, and also in this case, due to the proposed walls that they're showing, that that visibility to the building is strictly going to be within that office portion. And that aligns with our recommend, staff's recommendation of having that office portion that is visible from the intersection be within that Connecticut Western Reserve natural feature. And then it also just shows that we won't have any other kind of viewpoints to see the rest of the building. With that, too, I just want to make sure that it's also noted that those proposed retaining walls are also in compliance with our overlay district and the the nature of the materials that that we want to see in that section. I think that it covers the portions that I wanted to cover. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Cordrea for Brian Gorog, my colleague, to be sworn in, so that way he can discuss the overall site plan and the traffic considerations. And then after he's complete, I will outline our our staff recommendation, and then we can take any questions from there.
Thank you. Mr. Gorog, would you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
My name is Brian Gorog, G O R O G with O H M Advisors. So with respects to the site plan, we did ask for the traffic study impact plan, and really we needed that plan to really review the site plan for the ingress and egress to the site off of Heinz Hill. And that's why we really, why we asked for the traffic study for that. The traffic study is more of a technical report, not required by, for the planning commission. We've never had that required. But it's more for us to analyze the actual locations of the drives along East Heinz Hill and also along Dean Memorial. But as you know, ODOT actually owns and maintains that, and will have the final say in those locations, which is mentioned in our report. But overall, we were satisfied with the locations of those drives along Heinz Hill Road. In our report, we have some more really delving into some of the traffic impact study, just some technical questions, and we've received some clarifications. I believe, I I forgot the person's name earlier. But really, our looking, our intention was just to look to see if the locations were good. For example, at Bass Pro Lane, where that drive is located right there, and we'll be adding an additional turn lane as well as a light improvement, traffic light improvements. And again, part of our overall technical review, once this would so happen to be approved by Planning Commission, we will be reviewing further that traffic study report to make sure everything complies with us, with ODOT having a review with the turnpike and so forth. But overall, we are satisfied with the locations of East Heinz Hill Road, how they come into the site.
So is is the traffic report something that you prepared or the applicant prepared?
The applicant prepared. It was, I believe it was TMS. They're a local traffic engineering consulting firm that does many traffic studies in northeast Ohio, and they, I believe they did the one for Our House, if I remember. So they're very reliable. So that's what we were given, so we could actually examine the site plan. And that's why we needed the traffic study to actually examine if the locations of those ingress egress along East Heinz Hill Road made sense with what their traffic counts that they took. And we, you know, we have some more technical questions. Some of those were actually already answered today. But again, we'll do a further analysis, and this report will also go to ODOT, which actually ODOT already has in their hands. So this was submitted to ODOT already, and we'll recommend the applicant submits to the turnpike committee as well for review and as well as we'll do a further review, but based on what we have been able to attest to that the drives are in, we approve the drives in the locations as shown on the sightline.
And so then to to build off that, Mr. Chair, then our recommendation from staff is is support of the final approval for the site plan for the proposed development contingent on and subject to the following conditions. Those conditions are, as Mr. Gorog indicated, ODOT's approval of the drive locations and traffic study reports submitted by the applicant, which is required. The final approval by by village staff, O H M, of the traffic impact study after our further review is indicated by Mr. Gorog. Submission of a rendering of the building's office facade as viewable from Bass Pro Drive that comports with the Connecticut Western Reserve Design Standard. Submission of of an updated landscape plan showing the planting details and complete screening of of the building from Old Eight Road and Heinz Hill other than at the driveways, and in addition to addressing staff's comments. Submission of an updated signage plan for review and approval. Subject to village staff, O H M's full review of, you know, the submitted final plans and construction plans, which is in line with any of our development projects that we do. O H M staff and village staff go through and do our our full review, provide comments and and finalize everything. And then lastly, just to just to encompass everything else, just all approvals from village staff and any other relevant agencies be secured within six months of this approval, or the applicant must refile. So with that, that concludes our report, and Brian or Brian and I are here to answer any additional questions or comments that the commission members may have.
Yeah, can you send me your report in Word format?
I can. Yes, I can.
Okay, thanks. Anyone have any questions for either Brian or Arthur on the commission?
I have a, I have a question for Arthur.
Go ahead.
So, Arthur, I'm looking at your considerations list. And the one thing you didn't mention on here was the requirement for building setbacks in the the mixed use general sub district. So I'm referring to eleven sixty three oh five. Item one, A one speaks to along Heinz Hill Road, parking shall not be permitted between the building and Heinz Hill Road, and we we clearly do have parking between Heinz Hill Road and the building, and also it speaks to a setback requirement along Heinz Hill Road, maximum building setback of thirty feet. So in in your review, did you review the, some of these setback requirements?
Yes.
whether, okay?
Yes, so.
You speak to eleven sixty three oh five for me?
Yes, yes, I can. So in reviewing those, due to the nature of of the development, you know, we feel that, you know, we can potentially look past those setback requirements, again, just due to the nature of the development that we're looking at. And then in addition to that, due to the landscape screening that is being provided by the applicant. And then after reviewing the, let me get the the phrase right, because I always get this mixed up in my my mind, the sightline study PDF which shows the lack of visibility from the public right of way into that parking area. I'm com, I I feel comfortable allowing, you know, not not pushing those setback requirements, those setback requirements, that the purpose of them, as you kind of indicated, Mr. Bush, was to make sure that there's a screening of parking, right, from the public right of way. So that was the, that's, that's the spirit of those setback requirements. And so given, given the development that we're looking at here, and then given the landscape screening, the retaining walls that are being placed by the design team, I feel that we can, we can look beyond those those setback requirements. And Planning Commission, as part of of the review and the approval, with elements part, with the elements incorporated with the Heinz Hill Overlay District can be more or less restrictive with those requirements.
Any other questions from a member of the commission?
I haven't afforded applicant, but we'll wait.
I have also have another question for the applicant as well.
Mr. Sugarman, do you have any questions for the villages' witnesses?
Not so much a question, but I I would like to to indicate that we have had several discussions about the building facade and that the the, our review of the Connecticut Western Reserve is is a red brick type of a facade, and we've done some mockups, and it doesn't look good, frankly. So we've, we've discussed with the village, and I want to make sure that I get this correct, so I'm going to read it. We we would agree to implement a gray brick or stone cascade enhancement as a portion of the office elevation in lieu of the Connecticut Western Reserve Masonry as requested. So the point suggesting that I'd have, if if the commission is agreeable to these recommendations would be the third bullet point, which be submission of a rendering of the building's office facade as viewable from Bass Pro Drive that comports with the Connecticut Western Reserve or substantially similar or substantially compatible architecture design standard. And we're certainly willing to work with, work with the village to make sure that this, that looks good. We want it to look good, and we know they want it to look good as well. So that would be the only comment that I'd have on on the comments that Arthur and Brian talked about earlier.
Okay, thank you. Arthur, why, why do we limit this to viewable from Bass Pro Drive? Why aren't we seeing viewable from Heinz Hill Road?
Because through the the sightline study, it is, it would not be viewable from there. So that main, so that main corridor or that main drive access is what is going to be viewable from the public right of way. And that's based on the the sightline study. So if you were to look at that exhibit, and I apologize, I don't know what exhibit letter it is. But in that exhibit, you see from site section B. So if you're looking at that site section, you you begin to see where you have that clear view to view the building. And then if you look at the associated site map, which And then if you look at the associated site map, which shows where the site section is being cut through, that's being cut through right where, right where that drive access is going to be for Bass Pro Drive. So that's why, that's the piece, that's the piece of the building that is going to be visible based on the landscaping, the perimeter landscaping that's going around.
So what you're, what you're saying, though, is that that would be the northern facade of the building, correct?
That is.
And only that portion of the northern facade we requiring under your recommendation to comply with the Connecticut Western Reserve Architectural Design Standard.
That is correct.
So Arthur, are you saying that, I apologize, I didn't ask this question before. Are you saying that the building actually won't be, because of the great difference and the, and the birmingham wall, the building won't be visible from Dean Memorial?
Correct. Based on the sightline study that the applicant provided in viewing, due to, due to the topography where the building is going to sit, and maybe Mr. Lewis can, can further clarify. But based on where the building is going to sit, the proposed site walls that are being shown and then the perimeter landscaping, where the, the building is going to be most visible is at that northern elevation at that Bass Pro Drive intersection corridor, which is effectively the main entrance into the site.
Yeah, I can, I can clarify. It's definitely, that's the most visible. Now, just based on the, the, the natural topography as you're driving from the west to the east down Heinz Hill. Heinz Hill, you know, it helps us from a standpoint of where we have the burned areas, it falls off. Now, as you're driving down there, you know, you're going to be 30 feet above the finished floor of the building. So as you're, you know, as you're passing paychecks, looking off to the right before you get to the birmingham, you probably will, you know, I don't want to say the building's going to be invisible from that point because you're going to be above it coming down the hill. You know, you'll get glimpses before you kind of get to this burned landscaped area. But then as you continue on down towards Dean Memorial, the grade catches up. So really the grade helps and the walls will help again hide the building. Once you get down below the building at the elevations, once you approach that intersection between Dean Memorial, the intersection of Heinz Hill and Dean Memorial. But it will be that north elevation is going to be the, the most visible elevation of the building.
So about what percentage of that northern facade would be required to be in Connecticut Western Reserve, within the Connecticut Western Reserve Architectural Design Standard? I apologize, this is some kind of Amber Alert. Oh, well, probably off. Anyway, what percentage of the building? Everybody's getting it, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. What percentage? What percentage of that northern facade would be required to be within the Connecticut Western Reserve?
When you look at the, at the sightline studies that we have done, those site walls, you know, as you come in off of Bass Pro Drive, that intersection, that's probably going to be about 20, 25 feet tall. So it's going to obscure the lower, the actual lower half of that building from the site. So you're going to see the, the upper half of the, of that building from, from the property line. But, you know, we really wouldn't design the top half of the building to look like it. So, so you will see the whole, along that front facade, you'll see the whole upper half of that facade.
Okay. All right, thanks. Arthur, do you have anything else or Brian?
No, I don't.
Okay. Mr. Sugarman, do you have any further, you know, rebuttal testimony, anything like that that you want to introduce?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no further questions from any member.
John.
Said John, somebody wanted to make a.
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. On Exhibit A, I see nothing denoting stores of gasoline. I'm assuming you're going to have stores of gasoline for the vans. I don't know who's going to address this.
Yeah, this is Jody. Yeah, Bob, on these facilities, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are, there aren't any petroleum storage tanks on the facility.
No, we're not proposing any fueling islands or tanks.
Okay. All right, so those stop at gas stations or something on the way back or? Okay, anyways, over in the right hand corner, EV ready, that's, I'm assuming that's electric. And as for the associates, do they all have electric cars?
That's, that's part of the initiative moving forward. So EV ready means that the conduit will be provided in, in the, in the future as it, as we move in that direction.
So in other words, you're talking maybe your fleet is going to move into that direction?
Correct.
Okay. So there's not going to be any stores of gasoline at all?
Yes. Right, but, but the EV ready, is EV ready in any place other than the employee parking?
Yeah, the EV ready is throughout the site.
Okay. Another question on, let's see, Exhibit D. Building depicting pickup sign. Now, is that for the drivers or is that customers?
That would be.
I don't see no customer parking at all.
That would be for customers. So there is the, the kind of the yellow parking area. That would be parking for the general public as well as associates.
As well as associates. Okay, it didn't happen enough. Okay. And semis, nothing will be parked overnight. This is, they're in and out, right? You see trailer park, but that's just unload and load and that's it.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
I have a question for the applicant, Mr. Codri.
Go ahead.
On the, so the, go back to the buffer zone again. Mr. Codri had asked about noise from the Old Eight Residence. And it occurred, it occurred to me that the, the van parking are, I'm assuming these are, these are drive-in backup or are they drive-through parking? For the, in the van area. It's hard for me to tell on this. So are each of those little squares a van, based on this picture?
Yeah, so each one is a spot. So that's all straight. So it could be drive-through. Or it could, you know.
The reason.
It's more like a traditional parking lot.
Yeah, so the reason, the reason I'm asking is the, is, as memory serves, the commercial delivery vehicles would probably have a backup warning indicator that would be quite large and quite obnoxious, as memory serves. I don't know what, what those specific trucks are, but I believe that's a requirement for commercial delivery vehicles. Do you, do you know that, whether that's true or not?
I don't know for sure.
I believe they do have, you know, your backup beep, backup alarm, that's what you're referring to. Those noise levels and were considered in that noise study that was done.
They were?
Yes, they were.
The, so the backup, that, that back, whatever that backup beep or the backup noise?
Yes.
Was taken into account as part of the noise study?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And again, that noise study, because we haven't seen that, but that noise study took into account residential, bordering residential. I know it's kind of an unusual site because it borders correctly residential.
Yes, sir. Took into account all the adjacent properties.
Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. Poliak, anything from the public?
I have no questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I bring up a topic? If you were, if you were bringing up the, if you were bringing up the north elevation, could I maybe?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I maybe suggest to Mr. Sugarman and the design team that as it relates to that northern elevation, that it'd be approximately 75% subject to our staff's final review for something in the, in the spirit of the Connecticut Western Reserve style for that elevation?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Kind of my thought was going around, you know, as we develop what that product looks like and what it is with the elevations of the building, I'd like to, as we render it and get it comfortable to, you know, work with you guys on what looks, what looks best. Because maybe 75% is not right. Maybe it's something a little less, you know, just that, something that really connects with the aesthetic look of the outside of the building and looks pleasing and things like that. So, you know, I mean, I'd rather not put necessarily a perimeter around it. I'd rather, you know, work with you guys to, you know, get a consensus and an agreement on what looks best. Just a little bit of my thoughts around, you know, implementing that into the building instead of doing just a, you know, just throwing it up there and, you know, maybe it looks good, maybe it doesn't. Let's, you know, work together in our design review and come up with the best solution.
I'm amenable to that, Mr. Sharp. I just wanted to give something to, to give some guidance and some, some closure to the planning commission members as part of the recommendations, that way we can move forward.
Well, it does not seem to me that it is unreasonable for this commission to impose upon the applicant the requirement that a limited portion of its proposed building visible from Heinz Hill Road. And as you've put it, Mr. Schmidt, in your recommendation, that portion adjacent to Bass Pro Drive comport with our architectural standards. Mr. Gotsi.
Okay, my question is, Mr. Sharp may know this answer. I'm assuming this building is precast concrete?
That's correct.
Okay, I know you might notice what our house did on there. Is there corporate office building? Looks like there were bricks actually placed on it. I think that came right from the manufacturer of the precast. They have that brick in it. So if you come up with a couple of different stones, it might work. You might have that already done.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, no, appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. You know, that's absolutely been, you know, a thought that we've been thinking about, you know, as this, as this request has come up. Like I said, really, it's really figuring out, you know, what looks great with the building and it looks great from the street and what'll complement, you know, that, that's, that look, you know, from an, from an appeal and appearance standpoint from the community, so.
Right. I'm just saying, that's, that's one of the approaches they took and that actually was something that was approved by this commission, this commission, so.
Yeah, I've actually used that, I've used that method before and it, it does work well.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or further comments?
And one question, John. Kind of bothers me, it really has nothing to do with, why is it that we don't know who the tenant is?
It's been, the tenant has asked to remain confidential through the, through this process. So that's.
Is there a reason for that?
Further request.
I understand he wants to be confidential, but I mean, I would like to know who I'm approving something for.
If I may, as the tenant, I'm happy to answer that. This is Kylie Julio. I can be sworn in again if necessary.
Have you been sworn in for this?
Not for this hearing. Nope, not for this.
All right. I can't see you. You need to turn your video on. Okay, raise your right hand, please. You swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Please proceed.
And I just, Mr. Campbell, I just wanted to address your question as a tenant. Unfortunately, we can't disclose who we are at this time. You know, we are, I just want to reiterate, we are very excited. We don't have a lease in place here. So we're just working through the process and as soon as we have the lease, we'll shout from the, from the rooftop where we are. But we do appreciate the support we've received from the city. And, you know, we wish we could be more transparent on who we are at this point. But I'm happy to answer any questions regard, separate from revealing who we are about our operation.
The only question is who you are. Okay.
I know. I understand.
I'd like to know who we're boarding for.
Yeah, for sure. Definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions or other evidence to hear tonight, then the chair would entertain a motion either to approve or disapprove the applicant's site plan. If, if it's going to be to approve, then we need to wordsmith the language of that a little bit before we vote on it. What's the sense of the commission? Are we going to approve this? Okay, looks like two. Bob, how about you?
Yes.
Okay, well, then, then, well, let's, let's see if we can put together a motion to approve that we can then vote on. Uh, let's see. Would, Arthur, do we agree that, that what we're being asked to approve, the site plan we're being asked to approve would be a conditional use in this zoning district and the Heinz Hill Overlay District?
It would be, so based on the zoning variances, they were going under the underlying zoning, which was the Office Professional. That's where they got their approved variance for their use.
Okay.
And then we were applying the, and we've done this in other scenarios where we've applied the underlying zoning. But given that we're in the overlay district, apply the design and architectural standards.
Right. Okay.
So per, so per the, you know, per the BZA approval, which, and Don, since you were sharing that, just to make sure that my notes were correct, it was the request for the use variance, it was letter A, if I'm not mistaken, correct, to permit the use of a delivery station in Office Professional?
Yes, A.
So we, we would note that the proposed use is in the office professional district and also the Village Center sub-district, Office Residential Sub-District, and Mixed Use General Sub-District of the Heinz Hill Corridor Overlay. And that we may impose conditions upon the proposed use. We note that the applicant has been granted a variance with respect to required parking spaces and a use variance with respect to the use of the property as a delivery station. Therefore, upon application for site plan approval and upon consideration of the testimony and evidence presented, we would move to approve the application subject to the following conditions.
Mr. Codrea, before you move forward, there was the, there was the third variance for the intensity of use. Just to make sure we're on the same page. It was use, use for the, or what was described as delivery station, intensity of use, and then the off-street parking. Am I correct in that? Done?
Yes.
Okay, just we're all on the same page.
Intensity, what was the thing, what, what's the verbiage for the off-street parking?
Off, off, the, the chapter is titled Off-Street Parking Spaces.
Okay, okay. A use variance with respect to the use of the property as a delivery station, the intensity of use, and off-street parking. Well, the conditions that the chair is proposing should we approve would be, and these are standard conditions, we usually put in all of these, that the applicant would immediately upon commencement of operation register with the, to provide evidence of the same. We are approving the applicant's site plan as depicted in applicant's exhibits. Site development and construction would not, no, that, that's getting taken out. Applicant will comply with all provisions of the Planning and Zoning Code, including but not limited to all requirements of the Heinz Hill Corridor, including the architectural standards thereof as viewable from Bass Pro Drive. Arthur, would that do it?
Yes.
Okay. Compliance with all requirements imposed by the variance previously granted by the BZA, all requirements of a final traffic study, all requirements imposed by the state fire marshal, village fire chief, village engineer, village zoning inspector, Ohio Department of Health, Ohio Department of Transportation, Summit County Health Department, Regional Income Tax Agency, and all other requirements imposed by the codified ordinances of the village, laws and regulations of the county of Summit, laws and regulations of the state of Ohio, laws and regulations of the United States, and all requirements imposed by Summit Soil and Water Conservation District. Okay, those are the conditions that the chair proposes, pending to the approval of this application, should it be approved. Does anyone have any suggestions for anything else? Did I leave anything out? Okay. If, if not, then is there a motion to approve the site plan subject to the conditions enunciated by the chair on the record?
I will move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you. It has been moved by Mr. Bush and seconded by Mr. Campbell to approve the site plan subject to the conditions enunciated by the chair on the record. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, Mr. Mayor, roll call, please.
Mike Bush?
Yes.
Probably Campbell?
Yes.
John Codrea?
Yes.
Bob Poliak?
Yes.
I vote yes. I vote.
Thank you. The motion carries and the site plan is, is approved.
Mr. Codrea, you will provide a verbiage?
I will. Arthur, Arthur is going to email me the Word Doc, so I don't have to look at, look at it and retype it.
Mr. Codrea, I've already sent that to you, just so you're aware.
Okay. I'll, I'll talk about it tomorrow. All right, is there any other business to come before the planning commission this evening?
We'd just like to thank you for your thorough and thoughtful considerations this evening. And I know it's a late night, and last night was late too, so we're very much appreciative of your attentions in this matter. All the cooperation we've had from the village and Mayor, Law Director, and the folks from O H C, thank you.
Yes, I can, I appreciate your advice, time and thoughtfulness and consideration is perfect.
Welcome to the village.
Thank you.
Thank you for all for taking course tonight to, to move on. Thank you. Do we lose John? Yes. Are we done? Yeah, I think we're done. John's adjourned.
John's frozen here.
God, Froz. John froze.
I'll, I'll take them in here and say that I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I do have a second. A second. All right, I'll lose a favor. Is everybody saying aye? Aye. As opposed to time? Okay, we stand in agreement. Ten forty-five.
All right, thanks, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, thanks.
Good night. Good night, everyone. Good night. Thank you.